Uh.
Page forty.
IT.
Yes.
Page forty, everyone.
Excuse me.
You got a brief for us?
I don't, actually. There's not a lot of increases here. The increase basically is in the new equipment line item where we're want to replace the normal amount of computers that we always do and do an updated backup hardware. As you know, we had a little virus outbreak a few weeks ago. Backup hardware served us well, but it's a little long in the tooth as far as age goes, a little small. Seems like we store more and more files every year. Pictures get bigger and bigger, videos get bigger and bigger. So just want to bump up that storage space and bail us out again the next time something like this happens. That's about it. Most of the rest of the line items are level funded.
I will take any questions. Counselor Thompson.
My first glance proposal was to do a bottom line cut here of $4,000. There were two line items that stood out. One was the $1,000 for training that was expended nothing in the last two years, and the other is $4,500 that has been budgeted for repair, no, software licenses that has been budgeted for in the last two years and has been spent $1,300. So the total of those two line items adds up to $5,500. I didn't want to do all of that, but I'm shooting out a number of 4,000 departmentally to cut there.
Um.
And maybe you can address.
I would.
Can you explain what those are?
The training budget unfortunately is something I'd like to get to every single year, and some years I make it and some years I don't. I would like, there was a seminar coming up in Nashua that I'd like to go to. It's $999. It's Internet security and network security.
When is that?
That is coming up, I believe, in January of the next year, of that next fiscal year.
2017?
2017. I just got this write-up on it, so.
They're already giving you training for 2017?
You can see the calendars. They're outlining them. They do it every year, so I can't do it this coming year. I want to try and do it the next year. I'm a little paranoid about what happened with that virus outbreak. Some towns lose years' worth of data, and I really feel like we dodged a bullet. So I feel like the more arrows I can have in my quiver, the better off I'm going to be. When it comes to the software licenses, we are very far behind in our Microsoft Office rollout, and this is an effort to get caught back up. We probably need 40 licenses to get caught up. This would cover about 22 licenses. The most important, the most heavily used workstations would get us away from the Office version that's now eight years old, will be nine years old, and get us to an Office version that's only about two years old.
You need individual licenses and not a site license?
We buy site licenses.
And you need 40 site licenses?
We have about 70 computers in town, so.
Okay, maybe I'm not phrasing that correctly then.
You could buy site licenses in a small blocks as 10.
I guess that's the thing, like building license, or that's what I mean by site license. I don't know how it solves that up. One user buys one license that covers everybody under it.
You could do that. We would have to budget.
How does that compare to buying 40 individual licenses?
Again, it's the same cost. Microsoft sells site licenses in blocks of 10 at a time. You can buy them one at a time. I think they're like $289. If we buy the block licenses, they're about $230. So we save 50 bucks every time we buy them. But we have to buy them in blocks of 10.
Okay.
So generally, I buy 10, 20 at a time.
So what you're saying is that licenses are not a blanket. A town buys a blanket license and it covers all computers. Microsoft sells them in blocks of 10.
Right.
So it sounds like an individual, quasi-individual.
Okay, thank you.
How many people work for the town?
Full and part?
I actually calculated it last week. It's just over 69. That's full and part-time.
So every full and part-time individual plus has a computer in town?
You're looking at certain areas that have multiple computers, like tax collection. We also have what we call a citizen PC in tax collection where people come in and do self-serve things. You look at areas like the police department where we have booking and patrol. You know, you have multiple computers just to help facilitate certain areas where it's busier than normal.
Thank you. Counselor.
Just on the subscriptions again, is it going to, for the Microsoft programs, more of an annual subscription than you buy a license to get one version and have it for however long until you upgrade to a new version?
I mean, you can look at the annual subscriptions. I believe Microsoft charges $60 a year for the annual subscriptions.
So if you don't upgrade very often, you're still better off and you still can buy a, buy the licenses at this point?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm asking. Thanks.
Counselor Levy.
Just real quick. Budget for 15 was 169. The actual was 157. We cut it to 162 from 169, just, you know, so we didn't go to 157. We still put whatever it was, a few percent on the actual. I didn't do the math, but it looks like it's a couple of percent or 3%, whatever it is. Because it was five grand, I don't know. And then next year, or 17 budget, you're asking for 169 again, which is going back to 15, correct? I mean, that's what's here.
Yes.
So my question is, is there any reason you couldn't stay at 162? In other words, you did 157 last year. There's about, well, 1% would be 15. It's about 3% increase from what the actuals were, you know, going to this year.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, you know, what the 35 means, you know, compared to your overall budget because it's too early to really tell. Would it, would you feel that uncomfortable if we went and kept it basically at the 3% increase from your actuals from 15?
I would feel uncomfortable with that. I feel like we're behind on the software licenses, again, for Microsoft Office. I feel like we have to get that up to snuff.
What's that number going to be unless you already said it? I don't want to.
It's 4,500 for software licenses. Last year, we only expended 1339. Keep in mind, too, last year at some point, a directive came down from finance to not expend as much of your budget as possible because we needed money to cover snow removal. So some of these numbers, basically, we just put the brakes on.
I get it.
And that was, that's a big part of why software licenses were so low. We just stopped. We said, okay, we understand. We need the money for snow removal. And then the new equipment line item went up by $2,000 again. I just think we need some better network backup storage. If we had lost, if we had lost a chunk of data in that virus outbreak, I mean, we'd be having a very different conversation. We could be saying, I don't know what the budget is for the last, how many years, because we don't have that data anymore. So it's a matter of saying, let's get some better backup solutions in place. And that's that $2,000 increase. But definitely, the software licenses, we have to stop moving. We're running software that's nine years old for Office.
Can I jump into this as well? We need to move our accounting system, and a lot of these accounting systems integrate with Microsoft Office, so we may be forced to do an upgrade of all the Microsoft Office systems before that new system comes online.
In accounting.
No, no. Townwide. So like, if you're going to do a PO, the PO would go through email as opposed to being on the system.
On my software system.
Yeah.
And I'll agree. I mean, I'm the only one with 2013, correct?
Matt is now. We're rolling it out slowly.
I mean, most of the people that you still use in 2010.
2007.
2007.
Is our standard right now.
We are starting to see issues with, you send a file to one person, it doesn't quite, not as compatible, even though we try to save it backwards and those kind of things with Office. We, our systems behind, our computer systems are behind.
Okay, thank you. Answer my question. Any other questions? So is there a proposal still on the table to reduce it by 4,000?
4,000. Yeah, again, because the difference between actual this year and projecting out to the budget is about 12,000. So I grant you that we need to get upgraded, whatever. I just think 12,000 is a bit much.
And in 2014, the actual was 156.
Right. 156, 157, so going to 169 with the 12 grand right now seem much, but I get you. The software's got to get done.
So if we added the software in, just to help get the number right, about four grand for software, two grand for the, isn't that what you said somewhere around four?
Right, yeah.
And then I think I heard you say somewhere around a couple another grand for security or something like that.
Correct, yeah.
So that's six grand. So what is six grand?
And then we have salaries.
So it'd be about 100, and there is some salary, whatever.
Counselor Pike.
Which is around six.
As a, I'm content to leave it where it is. I think the arguments are sufficient for me.
Well, that's good. Well, I'm doing the poll.
Yep.
Counselor Weinstein.
Leave it.
Counselor Levy. I know exactly how it was about to vote.
Yeah, I don't have a problem.
I don't even know why, why do we bother at this point?
I don't have a problem reducing it.
It's the vastest of the budget.
I have a few grand, but that's me.
Oh. So reduce the four?
Put this four votes to leave it.
I haven't voted yet.
I know, but this still.
No, he's, leave it, reduce, leave it, reduce, leave it, reduce.
Okay, sorry.
Reduce.
Yeah.
I'm flag cutting it in half and saying reduce by two. Get something up there.
Do you want to re-vote on that now?
Let's re-vote on that.
Well, if we have the four votes, you know, it's.
Yeah.
Okay. There you are.
Reduce by two.
Thank you. I'm just going to, for now, I'm just going to take it for the new equipment.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Maybe the equipment will drop in price, Doug. You never know.
Yeah.
No, that's not a joke.
It's true.
You're laughing, but it's not really that realistic.
They can open Windows 11 and you're going to have Windows 10 cheap.
It's free. Windows 10 is free. We all have it on our computer right now. Say upgrade.
Doug, just on that, no. Are they having some problems with some of the upgrades? I know.
To Windows 10?
I know there's been a lot with Apple. You know, I'm still running 8.3 because I'm afraid of all the stuff I've heard about the other stuff.
Yeah.
Is 10, I heard some squiggly stuff about.
We're not rolling it out in the town right now because we don't know how it interacts with some of our software. We're waiting for some of the bigger vendors to come back, like the police department software, recreation software, accounting software, to come back and certify that it all works with Windows 10. And the printer drivers tend to be an issue. So we're kind of like you. We're a little gun shy. We wait.
They've had some.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Typically, the department who gets the new software first is actually me.
Yeah.
Because if there's such a.
You could do the least damage or the most?
Probably the least because I'm not in the.
You're not doing anything.
Yeah, no. I'm not in the big police system. I'm not in the tax collector system.
Right, right.
I know.
Right, right.
Guys are getting awfully sensitive.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Doug.
All right, thank you.
Are we asking the chief of public records directors?
Steve, I've got a contract.
Contract.
Which hat is it?
We'll have the fire department come up first.
What page is that?
That is on.
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine, thank you.
Chief.
Chief.
Wasn't late.
Just because I laid on my email.
You got to put your hat on if you're going to be the chief.
I was, yeah.
It's all a matter of.
All right, chief, what you got for us?
So the fire department has been, obviously, we were busy last year, but we've been extremely busy this year. We're already 100 calls ahead of last year at this time. And if you look at the increases, you'll see that's what killed me. It's the salaries was off on the part-time salaries. The overtime was over. Medical supplies was over. If you look at the actuals and you look at the requests, I'm just trying to compensate for the call volume. That's the big, we're just busy, busy, and getting even more busier.
How many full-time versus part, I must say.
There's two full-time staff.
Yeah.
One part-time admin, and then everybody else's call. And we have per diem on the weekends during the summer months, which is of our own folks also.
How is, excuse me, how is that? Like, how is the coverage?
The coverage is good.
Yeah.
The coverage is good. We haven't lost too many calls for as busy as we are. You know, sometimes we do lose them if something's out of service. It's typically because it's dual calls or there's something out of service on one of the ambulances. It's ironic, but you'd be surprised, they'll get banged out for medical, and 10 minutes later, there's another one. And that's tough to cover. But we manage. We don't lose too many calls for as busy as a department that we are. But it's tough to, it's tough to judge it. I would never, we're, like I said, we're 100 ahead of last year at this time right now. So it's just, in the bulk of what we do is medical. It's the medical side.
Just for the new members, and this, our volunteer fire is working very well for us. Knowing what a community our size, if we ever went to full-time, the budget would probably be at least $1.2 million higher than what you're seeing right there. Because when you do staffing, you do 24 on, usually three to four people on a shift, and then you got 24 off, and then 24 on, and then 40 off. So it's, you'd almost have to go to full-time. It would be like 16 members adding, so.
It's happening all around us.
Yeah.
Greenland's about ready to pull the trigger to go full-time seven days a week.
We're very fortunate.
Can't cover it.
Because they, everybody's, there's no volunteers.
Yeah.
It's, they make it more and more difficult for the part-time people to do it, too. The requirements for the training and the continuing ed and just, they make it tougher and tougher. They're trying to, in my opinion.
Trying to persuade people to full-time.
Make it a full-time thing and all that stuff. And then the busier you get, obviously, people, you know, they have a full-time job on top of doing this, if they're a call person, and, you know, there's some nights you just don't sleep. You'd be surprised at how frequently, every two hours, and if you go on a medical, you're gone for an hour and a half. By the time you get back home, bam, you get banged out again, and it happens. There's some nights where people, like, I just, I can't have my pager on, I'm sorry. They rely on a text, but that doesn't typically wake you up. Me, per se. But we're very, very busy for having just two full-time people. We're pretty fortunate. But the increases you're seeing is just based off call volume. That's really it. More medical supply. The hospitals are giving us less and less. We used to be able to get quite a bit of stuff, but the hospitals, they're cutting back, so we have to buy it ourselves, and that's really it.
Counselor Levy.
Steve, I want to just, I don't know if I'm reading this right. Fifteen original budget, it said, was 335, 785, they're 12.69.
Yep.
Right? Final budget was 347, roughly 12 grand up, okay? But it said 7.23. Am I misreading that? Is there some, Matt, what does that mean?
The 7.23 is compared to the final budget in 2014.
Okay. But it's higher, what I'm, but it's higher than the 12 points.
See, I'm comparing the.
It went up 12 grand from the original 335, went to 347, so why wouldn't that 7, why wouldn't that have been 19%?
Mm-hmm.
Am I missing something?
Because you went, let me look at the formula.
It looks like, it looks like the 7% is over the 335.
Okay, the 12% is based upon the original budget of fiscal '14 of 297,000, okay?
Yeah.
Compared to 335. The final budget for, between '14 and '15, I'm comparing the 324,000 for '14 to the 347,000 in '15. So my percentage is I'm comparing original to original and final to final.
Yeah, but it's really up even, so it really went.
From original budget.
I apologize because I'm not going to try to read, well, you printed out. It's just, right now, it's too small for me. It was 297 in '14?
And then the final was 324.
Okay, so the final budget was 324?
Yeah.
So it went from 324 to 347.
Which is a seven.
I get it now. And then, and then it's going to go up to 358. And the, what'd you say the actual was for 15, 297?
Actual 15 is 367.
Excuse me, 14, I apologize.
319.
Oh, I thought it was 297. I thought he said.
That was the original budget. Yeah.
Okay.
No, we said cut 14. I got you.
So it's up about 50 grand, give or take.
Counselor Burns.
I just have some questions. I'm just trying to figure out. Okay, so, all right, so the equipment purchase in '15 is 24, 742. It's requested 42.6, but then it was proposed at 25. So is this 42.6, is that like because of the volume? Is that what you're saying? You need more? Or, I'm just confused.
He's saying he needs 42.6. I say he needs 25.
I know, but what's that based off of?
He's replacing radios.
Radios, hoes.
He wants to replace all the radios. I say don't replace all the radios.
Okay, okay. All right, and then I have two more, sorry. Going up from their, again, it's equipment. In 2015, it was 21, 496. Requested was 22, and then again, 15.
Yeah, that's equipment maintenance.
But, right, it's like 22 and 21, it's like we're going with that. So why, what, I'm a little confused, why we'd under-budget that? And kind of the same question goes with training staff development, it's the same thing. 21, 279, 22, and then 14.
I think that, I think you had some sort of ambulance repair.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
Yep. The equipment maintenance line that overdue was for an ambulance, the older ambulance is becoming a little bit of a problem child, and that's the bulk of that overage.
It was a one-time.
Yeah.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
It was a big expenditure. They had to replace the turbo.
Okay.
And then they had to do it.
Okay.
Something else.
So was it like you're anticipating that happening, but then you're saying it.
I'm saying you're not going to have another large one like that. That's a, that was a freak.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Situation, but I'll give you a little more since it is aging.
Where, it takes, it'll take a year to replace it.
Yeah.
It takes that long for them to make them and stuff, but we're in the process of kind of reviewing it and evaluating and seeing where we're.
But that won't come until fiscal year 18 budget, correct?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. And then the training staff development came in at 15, 21, 279. The request was 22, and then the proposed is 14, so.
No, that's overtime.
Hmm?
Training staff development, the proposed is.
It's like the fourth one down.
Eighteen.
Overtime is proposed 14.
Fourteen.
Wait, oh, I'm sorry, overtime. I'm sorry, I'm on the gray line.
Yeah.
All right, so the gray line, the overtime, sorry. Make it more confusing. All right, so yeah, so that one's 21, 279, 22, and 14.
Fire overtime is, it's again, yeah, you don't know if you have a large incident. I mean, the year before, you had overtime came in at, let's see, 14. 14, 705.
What was the budget the year before, Steve?
I'm sorry, let's see, we had 12,000 in '14. It came in at 15, 5.
Okay.
13, it was at 11, and it came in at 14.
Okay, okay.
Emergency service overtime is one of those ones where.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
You kind of roll on the dice.
Right.
Anything else, Counselor Burns?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
Counselor Thompson.
I'll start out by saying I'm basically okay with this, understanding that some of these costs are offset by particularly ambulance with revenues. So I'm aware of that. I guess like anything else in every department, I'm going to say, look, at fuel, I think I'm basically okay with this, but I'll do my usual, can we trim that up just a little bit? Again, with the understanding that a lot of this, whether it's medical supplies or whatever, we're doing well with the ambulance on the revenues side. So could we, could we trim it up a little bit in the fuel or, you know, again, I'm.
So you're saying.
Between fire and DPW, again, looking at fuel costs, could we trim that down a little bit? I mean, I'm not saying 10,000, that was my original thought, but, you know, again, I get it, but hedging against what we know are coming in as revenues without crippling the department that's doing pretty darn well.
It's gas and diesel, right?
Yep.
It's not just diesel.
No.
Right.
And they don't own any VWs, so they should be okay.
The gas and diesel combined doesn't, is.
Less than 10.
9900.
Right, exactly. So that was, and then improving it out, and again, we, but also looking at actual expenditure, 362 at the end of '15 and projecting out, coming down. Overall, the budget is fine, but I know that ambulance revenues are up a little bit, and so I'm just wondering if there's any wiggle room there. Just asking a question.
Is that a proposal, or are you proposing?
I'm looking for input. Do we think there's a couple grand in there that we could wiggle out of it?
I, yeah.
Based on, based on the revenues being pretty good on the other side, which I know we're not talking about right now. That's all I'm asking.
Counselor Weinstein was the next light, but I'm not sure if she has anything specific or.
Two things. And just in response to that, the actuals for 2015 were 362, and what's being requested now is 358.
Right, right.
So it's already going down, but my question was about.
We're not seeing the revenues.
My question was about the equipment purchase line item and the radios. And is that, sorry.
Rick.
Sorry, my question is about the equipment purchase and the radios.
Yep.
And, and basically your request of replacing the radios, is that a safety? Because that's something that if we don't replace them, we're putting people in danger?
We, we, they can't go in without a radio. Everyone has to have a radio.
Okay.
So due to the fact that our numbers are dwindling a little bit, with, with some of our firefighter side, it's not so crucial.
Okay.
For me.
That was my question.
That cut's not gonna kill me. But they are aging.
Okay.
We're still, that's still in the back, your proposal's still in the background.
Thank you.
It must have been a couple, like, Counselor Pike, thank you, Counselor Weinstein.
Well, I had another little add-on there too, so.
Well, I, I'm gonna say that as a general thing, and the way I, and I sort of said it before, but I'll say it again as we approach these, that over, when we looked at what the, you know, what our tax rate has been over the last fifteen years, it's been level non-inflation adjusted, in which tells us what we already know. We've been trying to budget lean, we've been looking at actuals. So we've been trying to drive our expenditures lower, and one of the first concerns we started this evening was that, you know, as Matt tries, this afternoon, morning.
This is not Hillary's.
Whatever. So.
Not going at ten o'clock.
Yeah, so, so as you look at, you know, the, some, one of the first concerns was that revenue, you know, if we're going to actual, there's a little bit of cushion that's taken out there. And so my sort of inclination, looking at this, is that, you know, we're not seeing a lot of things that, gee, you don't really need that. We're, what we're doing is trying to shave a little more, and I think that I'm kind of inclined not, not to, to do too much shaving if we can, until we find something that we say, we don't need this. If we don't need this, if this can be consolidated, that's fine. But just shaving, it, it would be kind of a zero-sum game to say, let's trim the revenue and trim the expenditures a little bit. It really doesn't, I, I don't think it's, these, these are all tiny percentage over what's being budgeted. If we took a thousand dollars off fuel, what does that amount to, you know, point oh-three percent or something? So point three percent. So I, that's, that's sort of how I'm looking at this conversation now, and I think it's a good exercise, but I, I, that's where I'm, so I, as it stood now, I would be voting to, to go with the budget as it is unless something comes up.
Counselor Thompson, you said you had something else.
I was just gonna add in that there is, you know, capital reserve funds for some of it, and I suppose my question would be whether we could go to reserves for something like radios to address, you know, the request of forty-two, six, down to twenty-five. There are other ways that we can do this and within the budget or whatever without.
You could.
Should it, should it come up? At least that's my feeling.
Yeah, the main reason for the, the fire capital reserve fund is to replace vehicles.
Vehicles, right, understood.
But yeah, you could go to that.
Okay.
It's equipment.
No, I'm fine with leaving it as it, I just wanted to put it out there.
I just wanted, like, I'm, I don't wanna jump in.
Go ahead.
Thought we created like an equipment capital reserve fund.
We did, two years ago.
So that was not just, was specifically for equipment.
But we.
The question is, do radios fall under?
Didn't fund it.
We were only funding, the vehicle request was eighty-seven, I think, or eighty-two, and we put in fifty, I believe. And I think there was a request this year for vehicles and equipment, and it's, I think it was trimmed again, but I don't think you've got.
Where is that other, just police equipment? Where is the fire equipment?
No, they, they changed the purpose of the original capital reserve. It's not a separate capital reserve.
Okay.
To include equipment.
Include equipment.
So has that worked into the plan?
What do you?
We haven't gotten to that yet.
The capital improvement plan.
I think he's asking how much is in that.
So does the capital improvement plan now include equipment?
Yes.
And how much is in there?
Three hundred and twenty-seven thousand. How much?
There's three twenty-seven in there right now.
Three hundred and twenty-seven.
Yeah, but that's for like everything, that's ambulance, V, like fire trucks.
Fire trucks.
That's like.
The ambulance has come out of the revolving.
Okay. But so like, that's like, there's big purchases in there, three twenty-seven.
But, and, and the radios and that type of things wound into that, is that what?
You can withdraw from there for those things.
Wait, what, hold on, I'm confused. Phil asked a minute ago if we, didn't we set up a separate fund just for?
We amended the fire one so that it includes both.
Okay, so that, that more clear, a bit more clarity. I just had a real.
Yeah, Counselor.
Real quick. I tend to agree with Counselor Pike. I, I totally get it. A thousand bucks means zilch against eight million, nine million bucks, six million, seven million. The only thing I would say is this, the thousands and the twos add up to fifty to seventy to a hundred, and if you play it out, you know, and I'm just looking at page sixty-three, if we really do go up, you know, that much, and, and I'm, I'm not, I'm just calling it the way it is, we'll be north of a thirty-dollar tax rate within four years. So I'm just, I'm, I'm only saying if you can nick, because we're not really, you know, we, we can't win to lose. If we pick a line item, people say, don't like, you know, don't pick line items. Okay, so pick a number. So we pick a number, and then I remember one year I did that, and they said, well, what would you cut? And I'm like, all right, do whatever the hell you want, because it gets to a point where it's like, I can't, I can't win to lose. But I think if we're not gonna try to, you know, and I think they do a great job, I'm, I'm totally supportive, I'm not trying to, you know, crimp them, and, but I think the overall budget is fungible in general. And I think the town, you know, to, to Steve's credit and the department heads and to Matt, when they start getting into, you know, February, March, and they start going, wait a minute, you know, we've got a lot of snow, guys, you know, shut it down, go easy. And then you, and then you can put your foot back on the pedal depending upon where you land, you know, it is all fungible. So it's not like we're, you know, throwing anybody to the wolves and they can't find the money if they need it. And, and there are the capital funds, so I'm just, that's, that's sort of the response to, you know, point oh-oh-three. It's, because otherwise, we don't even need to go through this exercise. We could just add, you know, one or two percent. No, I'm saying, I'm not trying to be a wise guy, I'm just saying we could add two or three percent every year and just let it ride.
Counselor Pike.
Yeah, I, I think the exercise is valuable, though, for what we do the whole year. For my, this is where I really have my best understanding of what's going on at the department level. So I, it gives me the best sense of where we go, and I think it's a valuable exercise.
It was more, wasn't federal, I was.
Yeah, so no, so but that's, right, but so, but I'm just saying, very big picture now, we can't just keep shaving. If we can find real ways to increase efficiency, and I know we have a committee that's doing it, if we can do that, then I think that's another thing, but on the, to say, we're, we're at a contradiction if we keep trying to shave at the same time we're saying, well, gee, that revenue may not be conservative enough. Shaving without, you know, that makes us less conservative if we shave without identifying real savings.
The, I mean, I think that the bottom line is, it's the reason we had the RFP out for organizational study, is that if we don't make structural changes or really hard decisions as to what we offer as a municipality in terms of services, tax rate will increase.
Right. I agree with that, so. So, and I'm not, I mean, if somebody, if.
It will, as, as soon as we have a year where we get a heat cup and our revenues don't come in, we're gonna be having a much, and that's my biggest concern, is we go up, you know, four, five, six percent.
Don't shave here, and if it doesn't come in, then we are up a break.
And then boom, you don't have the extra money, then we're gonna be.
We haven't trimmed the budget at all now.
But, you know, personnel costs are going up, and you, we've been trimming on the non-personnel cost to the extent we can, it's, you just can't, unless you identify real structural savings, you just can't keep doing that, because the cost for these things is not going down. Fuel has gone down, but we don't know how long that's gonna last.
I mean, healthcare has skyrocketed, right? Between that and retirement, like, the amount of money that we're spending on to get the same level of personnel is, I mean, it's impacting the budget.
Steve, would you address healthcare for a second?
At some point, we have to, we have to make the decision to either cut services.
Right.
Or fund things, but I mean, cut services, I don't mean cut fifty dollars a year and a hundred dollars there, I mean.
Like structural.
Right. Providing some of the services that we provide.
The number one thing, if you remember when I said the, the increase is really for the general fund and not only healthcare, but all insurances. The problem we have it right now is not, forget the federal healthcare program. On the state level, ten years ago, there was competition in the markets for insurance. There is very little, soon probably no competition in all our assurances. We have Health Trust who provides health insurance. Primex pulled out of the health insurance market, so that's gone. School care would not provide us with a quote. Property liability insurance, you have Primex. Property liability trust is running down their business, they're not taking on new customers, so we only have one source for liability insurance. In liability insurance, nobody touches municipalities because of the number of times we get sued and the liability of some of the jobs that we do. Workers' comp, same thing. We're losing the competition there, so yeah, we are gonna see impacts. I just can't see anything else just because of lack of competition.
Yeah, I mean, like, right now, I would think you're getting to the point that Dale made, Counselor Weinstein made, Counselor Levy made, that basically, like, unless we are structurally shifting something, like, we could shave and try to keep ourselves within the margin, which I think is actually a valid exercise, especially because it really gets to, you know, really understanding how the town operates. The, but it, like, our tax rate is going to skyrocket in the future if we either don't structurally shift how we do things, be it regionalization, something, so we change the way we operate, or we're gonna see higher taxes.
The number one issue that's facing us is, I wouldn't even say is insurance, it's infrastructure. We underfund the roads, especially in comparison to other communities.
If they bond.
Do they bond? They, some, some bonds, some just put it, they know they have an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar cost every year for roads, and we're doing a hundred and twenty-five, well, now we do two fifty because of the contribution of capital reserves. That, that's my number one concern. It's not, I, I would say even before insurance increases, it's gonna be our infrastructure is roads. We just don't fund it. And I, and I, look, I'm, I'm the guy who cut it, so.
Are there roads we can get rid of?
No, sadly, no.
Can we privatize roads?
No, you don't have authority as a state. Only a state can.
I don't know who'd wanna buy them.
Start selling roads, buy them with, start a road company. Any, anything else for the fire chief? I will say that if you look at his expenditures for one quarter in FY sixteen and start doing the math, it's higher than FY fifteen, like, so it is, I guess my one question, do we know the exact number for the revenue of the ambulance or a round number? How much is this being offset by the revenue that the ambulance is making?
Oh, the ambulance makes about two-hundred-thousand dollars a year.
Oh, jeez, so like, two thirds of this.
That does not include the forty.
We're not seeing that in here when he's over budget, we're not seeing the offsetting revenue, and I'm aware of that.
And that doesn't include the forty-five thousand that goes into the revolving fund to buy a new ambulance.
Right.
Awesome. We done with the fire chief? Get the public works.
Public Works are in here.
What page are we on?
Forty-two.
Got something to brief us on?
Well, as you know, we were, got hurt bad last winter, so my, when you're looking at the actuals, there were things we could not, we just did not do, and, so it's not a good comparison, I'll just float that out there. But you could maybe look at an additional year, fifteen was kind of, we were close on a few things too.
Can you give us just some couple of specifics, what you did or didn't do, brief us for everybody's head of?
One thing right off the bat, I can tell you, I recall the spring cleanup, I think I had forty thousand, budgeted a forty-five, and Steve told me I was doing it for twenty-five. He said, figure out a way, and I think we just made it. I think we did it exactly for just about the twenty-five. That's one specific that I can tell you.
What did that tell you? I'm curious, was there, was there a compromise there? Did we lose out on something? Honestly?
We cut it back dramatically, like, I, I was surprised there weren't more people, I didn't get a lot of people grumbling about it, but you really didn't get to bring much, you know? That's the only way, and that's what we did, but people, you know, it was way down, things were way down, obviously, but there was just, wherever I could not spend something, I didn't spend it. We just didn't buy it. We didn't, there wasn't a lot of areas for that, as you can see, but you'll see, there's a few spots where we just waited until the new year to get here. We just put stuff off, we just didn't do it. Sending them home as much as we could, but you can see what the expenditure was. But.
Mr. Administrator, then Counselor Pike.
My reasoning for reducing it is that was an abnormal year. I mean, we haven't had two blizzards in one season ever, never mind the amount of snow we had. And we survived. I mean, that's plain and simple. I mean, I understand we couldn't do anything, but that's why we have that emergency situation, so.
Counselor Pike?
Yeah, I, I think this is an example, I, as I recall the discussion around the spring cleanup is that, you know, we had a request from, from constituents that they would like to see a spring cleanup. We heard from town administrator that most communities have moved away from a spring cleanup. I'm not sure how big, you know, what the popularity of, is of it, but if, you know, we know that taxes are gonna be a concern moving forward, so I, I would think it would be a reasonable time now to decide, do we wanna be one of the few communities that has a spring cleanup or move, move away from that at this point, because that, that could result in some, in some real savings, because we're doing something programmatically.
Is that in here?
That's under solid waste.
It's under solid waste?
Yeah.
We're at Public Works Admin, right?
Okay, well, that.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
So when you look, when you look at the, when you look at admin, if you look at the, the increases, I was basing it off of actuals in worst-case scenario for snow. One was obviously the overtime, general supplies was up, that was snow-related.
What about uniforms, Rick? Uniforms, you budgeted thirteen, unless I'm missing, at fifteen, you budgeted thirteen, five, you spent eighty-four. Excuse me.
Fourteen, he was right on. He was at fourteen, he spent fourteen.
We have, we got, we got a new company a year ago, Matt? Just about a year ago. We went with a new company, it was a lot cheaper.
So, okay, so we're.
That's why if you look, it's.
Ten.
Gone down, and then it.
So, good. Well, do you, you know what the cost of uniforms is, basically?
Yeah, it's, it's roughly the ten. I didn't buy some stuff in the spring, like, we buy newer reflective jackets, we waited till July because of the overages. But it's, it's right around ten if we buy the uniforms and the safety gear, that's the safe, that's safety vest and those types of items also. And then the do, advertisement was the only other thing, there was an overage on that. We had an opening, we had some troubles filling it, and then I was just budgeting for what was expended.
I mean, I'm okay with, with leaving the budget, you know, because last year was a.
Bad, bad year.
It was goofy. So, and they, you know, we don't know, we're not prognosticators, they say we're gonna have a bad winter, but you don't know.
No, we just don't know. I just tried to go for the worst case, like I said.
It's flat, roughly. I, I can live with that for.
Any, anything else on Public Works Admin? What now, roadway sidewalk?
Roadway sidewalk.
What page?
Let's write the next page.
Forty-three.
Roadway sidewalks, obviously salt, we did see a three dollar and thirty cent increase this year in the salt, it went up three dollars and thirty cents per ton. There was an increase there. I budgeted worst-case scenario once again for that. And then obviously the asphalt, that's the paving line item, I put in what was in the, in the report, the two thousand and twelve report, there was a reduction there.
Rick, did you not do pavement marking just because of the budget?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
That was one of those things we waited. We did it, but we waited till the budget.
Counselor Burns.
I just have a question with the asphalt one, because, you know, we've been talking about roadways and everything a lot. So with that type of reduction, what, how does that impact what you're gonna do?
Well, if you, the roads are taking a beating, and I think.
Yeah.
I think people can see that now, it's gonna catch up. It is catching up with what we're doing, we're just not maintaining any type of line at all. So at some point, it'll, people will start letting you all know, I think, that we need to do something different until that happens, I guess, and be satisfied.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, that's kind of a big thing, I don't, I don't know that that's, I don't, I think that should be more.
It's the lightning rod, and I, you know, it's one of those things, it's an easy place to go grab, and.
I didn't see whose light was on first, Counselor Tony, or Counselor Weinstein, or Counselor Thompson?
I think mine's been on.
Counselor Weinstein.
So I, I do have a couple of questions, but I do wanna talk about roads first, and that's, like, I know that, so in the CIP commit, CIP committee, we put two hundred and fifty into the roads, which was also cut. And I know there, so I know there's a contribution to the CIP, and, and the total would be two fifty. But I guess philosophically, the idea for CIP is that that's money that we're going to use for future projects, or, you know, and save as we go. If we're talking about two hundred and fifty, that we want two fifty for this operating budget, then it should be in this operating budget, and contributions to the CIP should be additional, in my opinion. Like, that's how it should work. And I think we need both. I, I think we need to put some money into our roads, so, so there's that.
Counselor, can I just?
Yeah.
What, what you should do budget-wise? Asphalt in the operating budget should be resurfacing. Capital improvement one should be reconstruction, when you go down to the base and rebuild the entire road. So what you have is, as the operational cost, is the continuing maintenance. Once you reconstruct, you should continually maintain those roads until you need to reconstruct again. So that's, that's the difference between the two, and I think you, you're on there. But the reconstruction is the bigger, you rip it down to the dirt, you put a new base, you put a new color it, and you, you rebuild it. Right now, we're only just doing basically asphalt.
Top.
Topping it. We're not doing the reconstruction.
Counselor Thompson, then Counselor Burns. Oh, I'm sorry, is Counselor Weinstein either?
I have a couple other things, but not around roads, so.
Thank you, I was going to, Steve qualified some of that as far as the level that we're doing. I would also say that, yes, people are complaining about the roads, although I defy you to drive around Portsmouth and tell me that their roads are a lot better than ours, for all the money that they, that they spend. The other thing is, we don't yet have a plan. And we have been asking for this, and I understand we're waiting for UNH. But it's, it's not the council that's holding us up, and I want to make that very clear.
We do have a 2012 plan, and we're updating the plan as we speak.
Right.
Yeah.
We also have a sense of what things will cost.
Right, and my fear of what will, what could happen in, with this 2017 proposal, is that, you know, we come to the time where you come to us and say, or the council at that time, and say, okay, I need to do asphalt, you know, we need to get this approved, and then we, well, it's not in the budget. So.
CIP could be used, couldn't it, Steve?
Yeah.
It could, but we should still, like Counselor Weinstein was saying, we should still be funding both if we're having a savings plan and maintaining this all the time.
And we are.
So that's just my fear with that, is, and I think we need to increase it, honestly.
Counselor Weinstein.
I mean, again, I just want to, what we talked about for this year is one twenty-five, the current year that we're in, to do one mile of Ashwamp Road. I mean, that's what we're talking about. So one, one twenty-five isn't getting us, it's one mile of just the finish coat, right? Is that accurate?
The finished course.
Yeah, so by twenty-seven, you know, in 2017, we're talking about one more mile of road, and I, it just doesn't seem adequate to me.
Counselor Levy, Counselor Pike.
You sure you want him to go first?
Yeah, it's fine. You were.
You know, I hear all this, and I would just remind people that we're going to be doing Bennett Way next year, and that's going to be about two fifty to three hundred grand, or whatever it's going to be with the labor and the overtime and everything else. I think some people are going to have to make a determination, and maybe that'll be at election time, do people want, you know, to do Bennett Way, to do the roads, to do everything? Or are they going to say, we're going to prioritize? And I hear people want everything. And I certainly don't want not to maintain the roads, but I think this council should spend a little more time prioritizing the monies we do have, because when we, when we go north thirty dollars, which is going to happen, would have already happened if the vote went through a year ago. I think you're going to start really pushing that envelope as far as the affordability of the town. So, just my comment.
Counsel Pike.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that, I think. I think the question, though, is when I think about what we're spending on roads, I think we know that this budget, as, as it's currently constructed, does not represent the amount of money that would, we would need to spend on our roads to keep them from, at a level space into the future. And we've been three years, this is my third year in this process, and, you know, I think I observed early on, yes, we've gone through a recession when I was back then, you can't forever say we're going to fund roads at less than the cost of, of continuing to have roads in this, you know, unless we want to go back to dirt roads, or who knows what. So you, you have to decide at some point, are we going to, you know, do infrastructure at the rate of maintenance, or are we in an emergency still? I don't think we're in an emergency. And I don't think you can apply the fact that you decide to put a new section of sidewalk, so a close call, that was a deciding vote, I'm, you know, whatever we did about that sidewalk doesn't change the fact that roads have to be maintained, so.
My point was priorities, just for the record. It wasn't, it wasn't.
Right, priorities is, but I mean, and I, but infused in that priorities conversation was, someday we're going to hit a thirty-dollar tax rate. Inflation is out there, a school building is out there, someday we're going to hit a thirty-dollar tax rate. I'm not excited about hitting a thirty-dollar tax rate. I'd prefer not to hit a thirty-dollar tax rate, but I'm pretty sure it's going to happen unless I move away. So that's the way it is.
So if you move away, we won't hit thirty dollars?
I might go where it's fifty, but I'm not planning to move anyways, but, but I think we, you know, that, that's not an argument for what, what we need to, to fund our roads at, that's all I'm saying.
I, so I am inclined to not increase it this year. I'd like to see what the study comes back and says. I'd also like to see what our, like, the organizational study comes back and says, so we can maybe find savings somewhere else in the town to reprioritize that money to roads, because I completely agree, we need to, the roads are going to need to be funded eventually. I just want to know where we're going to, like, have analysis backing up where we can take money from to reprioritize to those roads, as opposed to just adding into it.
I just want to highlight one part, there will be no sidewalk construction.
In FY seventeen.
In FY seventeen. That was eliminated.
That is the eighty-eight thousand dollar reduction.
Yeah.
The irony is, we're talking about something that's actually a reduced line right now.
Yeah.
Counselor, Counselor Pike, and then Counselor Levy.
Just like to back up a little bit to the spring cleanup. Is there one scheduled for 2016, the current budget that we're working off now?
Yep.
Okay, so we're talking about seventeen budget here that we're into today. If I had my druthers additional money into road rehabilitation or spring cleanup, I'd pick the road rehab, additional money for it.
Is there money in?
I think, I think we have choices as far as spring cleanups go, and I know it's a, it's a button that I probably not going to want to push too hard, because it may be a lynching in the town square, and I could be part of it. But anyways.
Which end of the rope?
It's thirty thousand dollars.
There are options for folks that have items that they need to get rid of. Example, wash, a refrigerator, you buy a new refrigerator, your old one died. I don't like that word either, but anyways. They, they'll deliver the new refrigerator to your home, take the old one out with, with them. So there are other ways of disposing of these items, other than waiting for the day that new Michael will take them for free.
I'm all for that.
Buy a refrigerator?
Spring cleanup was really slow, too. It was real slow. It really was.
Yeah.
Most of the stuff that came in was the leaves and brush, and you don't pay for that anyway.
Yeah, so what are, what, is there a motion?
Is there a way to move the amount that's in the spring cleanup to the, to the road budgets? It's a small amount?
I take thirty thousand dollars added to this one, and I reduce the solid waste by thirty thousand.
I'd be in favor of that, that's a start.
So it's, okay.
And I, I just had one, if, if Rick, and I'm sure Steve could supply us, could we just get a list, Rick, of the roads, you know, like, one through ten, say? Or one through whatever number you think really needs to be addressed? And then we can on our own just see these roads and check them out to see, you know, which ones are the worst? You know, from your perspective, and then we can drive them.
I could tell you right now, if you want to write them down.
Shoot.
Don't ask.
I mean, I'm just curious, because I'd like to see the ones that are all falling apart.
Okay.
Was that in our box?
This was the copy from the twenty-one.
New Road.
New Road.
Yeah, well, I live there, so I.
Go ahead.
Terrace Drive. Bald Hill Road. The remaining part of Ashwamp Road from whatever number Larry Pickren's at to the golf course. Granite Street, Church Street.
Okay. So that's.
Dame Road.
Okay.
Seanborn Ave. Smith Garrison.
Yeah. Okay.
And what do you, and I'm just asking, because I, I live on New Road. You know, it's not great, no question. Chunks are falling out on different sides. You talking about eliminate, you know, taking it up from the, from the ground?
It would need a reclamation, they're not, no one would overlay that, shim it or overlay.
Because that's an old farm road, I don't even know if you could.
In those areas that are bad, what we typically do when we go in and reclamation, we'll, we'll.
Grind it all up?
Grind it up, we'll roll over that lane, take out the good gravels, we'll add fabric. When you put that fabric in, the engineers say it's like adding a foot of gravel. So we put that fabric in, we'll remix in some better gravels with the additional gravels, and regrade the road and compact it. And we can't do the entire road, but you know, like, you walk your road frequently, so you know, those, those sections where it might be a hundred feet where it just goes to nothing. We try to address those little sections, because we can afford to do that. We can't stop from one end and go to the other and box it and redo it, but that's what we attempt to do. We did that.
So are you talking at some point, when you reclaim it? And I'm assuming that is, because there's two things. There's, there's the traffic on some of these roads that I think should be part of the component when we're assessing which ones to do.
Yeah, that's correct.
Right? I mean, some of them may be not great, but they don't get much traffic.
That's correct.
Okay? And then some of them get, and that's what we need to know. I mean, I think it would, we need to be armed with the information to know, you know, what kind of traffic flow do they get, and what is it going to cost?
And the other thing that takes into, what you have to, and I don't think people realize this, is when the roads get that discomportioned and all rutted up, it takes more material in the wintertime to get them to open up and be less icy, because all the plow does is fill in those ruts. So now, instead of having a nice scraped, clean road, you've got the areas where there's, the plow can't get into these holes.
I'm Willowware.
So it's, you know what I'm saying? It takes more material to treat them, it takes more time to take care of these roads. You take a road like Ashwamp Road, I think the count on that road's three, four thousand cars a day now. Especially with the little projects going on, it's a cut-through in the mornings and evenings.
And what do you, and just in closing on this, just to give us an idea, what would you estimate the traffic flow on, like a New Road would be a day?
New Road?
Without the traffic being diverted?
I think New Roads up around two thousand, in my opinion. It is a, it is somewhat of a cut-through.
No, no, when it's not, when we're not having.
Oh, if it wasn't a cut-through?
No, when we're not getting traffic diverted like we are now. Is it, you really think it's two thousand?
No, it's probably around twelve hundred. The bridge saves a lot of that road, because the trucks can't go over it.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Weinstein.
This isn't about roads.
Let's, let's finish the road conversation. So there is, there was a discussion about moving the thirty thousand dollars from spring cleanup to the roads.
Yep.
I'm assuming Larry's in favor, or Counselor Pike's in favor, because he made the comment. Counselor Burns?
I can buy into that one.
I'm in favor.
Counselor Larry. Counselor Weinstein.
My husband will probably kill me, but yes, I'm in favor.
Counselor Thompson.
Sure.
All right, so we will move to thirty thousand. Non-road conversation.
Okay. So I have a question about engineering.
Yes.
And my question is, we talked about, not that long ago, about the possibility of hiring an engineer.
Yep.
And is that, would it be for this type of work? And so would it replace that line item, or be?
That's where we fund it from.
Okay, that's where it'd be funded from, okay.
We don't, I, I didn't change anything yet, because I don't have the proposal.
Right.
They come in next week.
Right, that makes sense. And I did have another question, I just don't know what it is at this second, hang on. You can go to someone else if they have something.
Does anyone else have anything on roadway sidewalk? We have more Public Works stuff besides roadway sidewalk.
No, I guess that's it.
Uh, streetlights. I'll take a song.
We haven't added any new lights. It, it's just the increase in the, in the rates, that's all, that's all that is.
Probably asks us every year, can we change LEDs at any point?
We, we haven't changed LEDs, no.
No, can we?
We are going to, as part of the downtown, if, if it gets approved for the traffic safety program, those are going to be switched to LED, so.
I'll save us money.
Yeah, that'll be the first part, but we got to get approved first.
And that's part of that safety?
Yep.
Thing that the state's been working on?
Yep.
But we couldn't get anybody to want to bid on it, because?
Correct.
So, okay.
Counselor Thompson.
Streetlight fixtures, do we need any? Are you thinking we're going to need any? That's a planning thing?
We have to replace, we replace so many of the bulbs and ballasts throughout the year, throughout all the lights that we own, there's several that we own now, we have all those ornamental lights throughout. We typically change our ballast and water bulbs, that's what those fixtures, that's what that line is.
Thank you.
Anything else on streetlights?
I just have to ask, is there anything we could do our-wise, Rick? Meaning, limit them, or?
They're all on photo cells with timers?
No, and I'm saying, what, just for, refresh our memory.
Every other one on?
How, yeah, I'm just saying, are they, what are the hours they're on?
Dusted on.
It's based on light? It's, they turn on according to light, right?
That's correct.
And to Amy's question, could we do every other one?
I wouldn't do that on the main street. Maybe in some parks. I don't know how that would work down in the parks, waterfront, there's several lights. We don't have vandals and issues now.
Yeah. You, so you think every other one in the main street would?
Oh, there would be too many dark spots. I would not recommend, that downtown, in my opinion, isn't bright enough.
No, but outline areas like my street, you know, where there's, there's a couple, do we need them all on all night, you know?
The ones out on the country roads, you're either paying for it or you're not, so you either take it out. The one thing I will say is, typically a light out on the country road is always at an intersection where there's a stop sign. You don't see them just randomly. You do more around downtown, where we have sidewalks and so forth, and more people walking, but like on, on our roads, if you see a streetlight, it's at a, it's at a stop sign. I wouldn't recommend anything with those, the emergency services knows that's where there's a street, and it helps us find the streets and identify, so.
Okay, thank you.
Bridges.
We got rid of that.
Nice. Can we get rid of the page?
Well, he, the department head did propose it, so, and I eliminated it.
Buildings and grounds.
Phew, buildings and grounds.
Page forty-six. Holy moly. We get rid of buildings and grounds and take back bridges?
Building and grounds, obviously, it's all the town buildings, electricity, heat, water, sewer, building maintenance, the day-to-day maintenance, the clocks, the dam, the hand tub, everything, bandstand, you name it. Mosquito control's also in here. No, no big major changes, really.
Counselor Weinstein.
So my question is just about the town clock maintenance, and, you know, so in 2015, we didn't spend anything. Is that correct? And so far in 2016, so is the maintenance, the winding, that's the winding?
Anything with the mechanism.
And, so we only need two fifty? Is that?
The rehab, right? The guy at the door for you.
That's what we're, yeah, we're not spending a lot on mechanisms.
The clock was rehabbed, and for a year, there was a, the guy had to maintain it. When he did all, restored it, if you recall, so that's why that's kind of funky-looking there.
And there's eight thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars in the fund, if there's anything large that we need to do.
We have a, we have a mechanic on call. It usually costs about two hundred and fifty dollars for him to be there for half a day. We had him here just recently, which we spent two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. So, you know, this is really, the two hundred and fifty bucks is just one call.
Okay, because I thought that at one point, we were, we were paying someone to do the winding on a regular basis.
We do.
Is that a different number somewhere?
That, that person's included in the salary line item. We pay him a stipend.
Okay, so it's not.
As an employee.
Okay.
That clock line item is maintenance.
Okay.
And because it was refurbished, the maintenance should be lower, but we have had a couple of glitches.
And then the housing of the clock, which I know has been a little bit of an issue, do we have any kind of a plan for that? You know, the, the church came in to the council in, whenever that was, in the spring, to ask about getting funds from the town, and do we have any, any plans for helping? Is there any money for that project at all? Have we been?
No. We are looking at a proposal that may help the church, but it's not, it's not our responsibility for the housing. Ours is the clock. And if we were to say, okay, if there was some issue with the clock, and the church said, well, we're going to break the lease, or, you know, there's no lease either, at this point.
There's no agreement between us and the church in writing right now.
And so if there was anything that ever happened, and the church says, we don't want to maintain the, we don't want to have the clock in there, we take a, we have a, we have a clock, and we could make a tower somewhere else. But it's our mechanisms, their housing.
So there's no plan right now to donate money to the church?
No. No, we cannot.
We can't legally do it.
We had, the attorney said, we cannot donate money to a church.
No, and I'm not in favor of donating money to the church, just to be clear. But I do understand that our clock is in the tower, and that at some point, we have some responsibility to that?
No.
Nothing.
We can take it, we can take it out.
Probably a handshake.
It was very common in the eighteen hundreds that when the meeting house was also the church, that the clocks went in the church. I can tell you, it's, I know there's one in Epping, the same situation, but it's usually, the mechanism is, mechanisms are maintained by the town and the housing is maintained by the churches.
Right.
Yeah, I, I don't think we have a responsibility, I don't, I'm not sure what can be done. I think the town has an interest, just as, you know, in Portsmouth, the, the main church in the downtown. You know, the North Church is iconic for the town, so we have an interest. We may or not be able to find a way, but I'm glad you're working on it because I think we do have an interest, not an obligation, but an interest.
Uh, other building and grounds. Council Thompson.
Back to my, my fuel thing, I think there is five thousand in wiggle room here that could be taken out. One, whatever line items again, but I'm focusing on fuel and I think that that can, I think that that can come down.
Where's, is it heating oil you're speaking of?
Heat and oil, there's one, two, three, four line items. Between all of them, I think that I'd like to propose five thousand dollars to the bottom line based up, based on that.
I can live with that.
Can you live with that, Rick? I'm sorry.
We locked in a real great rate, it's a fair statement.
About ten grand?
I don't know if I'd say ten grand, but we did get a great rate for fuel. The only building that has fuel is the library in the town hall, everything else is propane.
Is there a better number? In all honesty, I'm not being a wise guy, I'm.
It's like the Pickers, how about seventy-five hundred?
Could you be fair back and tell me, could you go higher than that?
I would be comfortable with the five thousand, I would be comfortable with your number. I would be comfortable with what I know the rate that's locked in, but if that's only for fuel, it's not for propane.
Seventy-five?
I'd go with your five thousand, I'd definitely.
Counselors.
Five's fine.
Five's good, Council Pickers?
Good.
Everyone good with five? Alright, yeah. Uh, Council Pickers?
A question on the senior center heat. The proposal's fourteen grand and was drawn down by town administrator by one half.
Yep.
Seven thousand. How did, how did you arrive, if you don't mind sharing that with us, how did you arrive at that figure?
We only spent two thousand two hundred eighty-six dollars the year before and we don't know where we are because this was previously covered through the housing authority. So I thought fourteen was too.
No, no, this is the senior center down here.
We don't, we don't fund that one.
Well, that's what this says, senior center.
No, that's, we don't, that's a private entity. We do not fund that one at all, except for an annual contribution.
The sunrise sunset.
Yeah, but this said senior center.
We, we only have a, one senior center, it's called the Sunrise Sunset Center.
No, that's wrong.
Well, the other senior center doesn't belong to the town.
We do not fund the other one. So in our books, we have one senior center, on the town books. That is a sunrise sunset center. So we use the general term senior center. That is a private entity which we provide a contribution to, which is under the grants section. So that's why previously the heating there was at the sunrise sunset center was provided by the housing authority.
Yes.
We reduced that to seven thousand because as of last year, we only spent two thousand two hundred eighty-six dollars. We're still in the fluctuation, we don't know what the actual cost was going to be. My belief was fourteen thousand was too high.
Was that for the whole year, Steve, last year?
Two thousand, was it half the year?
Sorry, what, I, oh, last year? Yeah, I think it's about half the year. So I have to agree with Steve in cutting that, we really don't know what the amount is.
Seven thousand.
They couldn't tell us.
As adequate as possible, seven thousand.
It's possible, yeah.
No, but if you double the number, if you said it was about half the year.
Yeah.
And you double the number, you're certainly within the, you could even be a little lower, frankly. But it's fine, I mean.
If you look at the building, you look at the PD, there's similar buildings, propane, so.
Do you make it five?
You could probably go with the PD's number realistically.
PD was?
Forty-one hundred.
Forty-one, yeah.
Five?
Take it to five on the heat?
Yep.
Electricity stands, Gary?
Yep.
Yeah, electricity, I wouldn't mess with, I don't, I just don't know.
Cut that by, what is that, cutting it by?
Two.
Two, so now DPW is minus seven K. Excuse me, building and grounds.
Well, then it would, if you had another two, it'd be ninety-five hundred, wouldn't it? Did I do something wrong?
No, it was five K.
Oh, I was at seventy-five, I got all excited, I'm sorry. I'm back to where we started, seventy-five.
Any other building and grounds?
These cemeteries, Charlie?
Yep.
Cemeteries.
Because maintenance. It's only up point seven eight percent.
Point seven eight, no big surprises there.
Except the actual last year was twenty-eight.
Did we spend sixty thousand in mosquito control or fifty-five thousand?
You haven't noticed a difference?
Do we really spend, we spent fifty grand last year?
Jesus.
It's, but it's mainly around like the athletic fields and stuff, right?
We do the fields, we do surveillance, the biggest thing is surveillance, all test sites, monitoring.
Who does it for us? Who's the company?
It's new.
Mike Morrison?
What's the name of this?
Mike Morrison.
Municipal Pest.
Municipal, okay.
Municipal Pest, out of Portsmouth or is it York now? Kittery?
Portsmouth.
Portsmouth, thank you.
Okay, and they do a regimented?
They do.
They hit the ponds and all that stuff?
Salt marshes, the whole thing, yes.
So they know, okay.
And they test, that's the, that's the big thing, they test to see what's, what is found in the mosquitoes as well. So if there's a case of. Tripoli, West Nile, I think I, we get reports monthly.
Every month.
And if this, but if something comes up, they'll warn us ahead of time.
We have the tools in place to do the adult asideing where the truck drives around and all that happy stuff, but we don't do that. The only thing we do is bury a spring at the, at the athletic fields and parks.
Okay.
Just like it was a bad, a snow year, it was a good mosquito year, dry year.
Yeah.
Um, anything on cemeteries? Council Thompson.
The line item for part-time salaries, actual expenditure was sixty-one hundred and we're now asking for, well, originally asking for fourteen thousand and now down to eleven. That's a fifty percent increase, it looks like there. And my other question is on contracted services, going from an actual spend of about three thousand and requesting five thousand. What are these two, what is in these two line items?
We had an opening there and we had trouble filling it on that part-time salary. The individual working there worked very briefly and then we didn't, took a while to fill it. And then the.
You filled it now?
Yeah, it's filled, that's correct. And then the contract services, we had some grub issues down there and what we, we were spending all of that. So now we've been evaluating it and it hasn't been quite so bad, he's been doing the treatment. But we have the tool in place, if it does hit the whole place, to be able to treat it. Right now, he comes in and evaluates to see if it's necessary to do the treatment, he does spot treatments and we've been getting away with the spot treatments. But there was a time where we were doing the entire cemetery. The other part of that contract services is for the Pelsars to maintain and sell the lots. They get a, once a year fee.
If you look at fourteen, those, those numbers are more accurate.
What was that last part about Pelsars?
The Kenton Pelsar Funeral Home, they sell all the lots in the cemeteries and maintain the records. And I don't believe he's done an increase on his rate, but I can tell you that.
He sells lots.
He's selling for the town.
Yeah.
Oh, that's what I.
He maintains the records.
That's what I, he left that part out for me.
I'm sorry.
No, it's not privately owned.
Yeah, I wasn't getting that part. Okay, so he's selling them and the town's getting the revenues?
Yeah, and he manages that whole thing, so we're supposed to keep track of all the lots.
We don't want to do that.
We contract.
No, no, I didn't suggest we did, I just didn't understand.
He used to do it for free years ago and it's just become a lot, so he charges a fee now.
I probably get four or five deeds a month.
It's a busy place.
Yeah.
It's a growth, it's a growth industry.
It's literally, it's, it's a deed, it's, yeah, we sell a plot.
You're getting up there, you might want to buy one.
I might want to. Getting closer every minute.
Calvary Riverside, Church or State, who are you giving your money to?
Anything else on cemeteries?
This is cremating. Take me, please.
Vehicles.
Vehicles.
We're ahead, but now we're behind.
Vehicles, where we continue to use auto excellence for our vehicle needs and maintenance. No big surprises, really. Just try to, obviously, the equipment maintenance is a, that's, a lot of that has to do with snow also. So you'll see that increase, but.
So all in, because you just probably know the number, what did we spend with them last year? If you added them all up, Rick, auto excellence?
Um, if you, if you.
They maintained for all the vehicles they maintained.
So, uh, let's see, I'll tell you real quick.
You're lucky. Nice if there was one line.
Almost eighty thousand.
I was just going to say about eighty thousand.
And when we used to have, um, the gentleman that we had there for years, we had him, his salary, the parts. And do we still, we still had to send certain things out for certain things, didn't we?
We still send stuff out.
So it's seven?
Yeah, it's definitely a plus.
Because you don't see this part as the benefit, you know, he was full-time, that's not, that wasn't.
No, I get it.
You know, yeah, I got you.
Any fuel, is there any gasoline benefit there, is there? Since Amy, yes, since Amy didn't bring it up, I just thought I'd look.
Oh, I had my hand on my buzzer.
Oh.
Thanks.
Go ahead.
No, go.
No, I'd rather.
You can take one, I think.
So one of them is going to suggest cutting gas?
Right.
Absolutely.
Right.
Gas and diesel fuel, um.
Gas isn't locked in, the diesel we did lock in. So I would look at the diesel fuel if you're considering that's locked in for a year, the gasoline does not, is not locked in. I wouldn't trust the, that market myself personally, but the diesel was locked in.
Eight thousand, Rick.
Eight thousand in diesel?
I was going to say ten.
Eight thousand.
Remember if.
Diesel right now is forty-five.
Remember if gas stays low, if it does, it's fungible.
I mean, there might be other fudgeable, you know, little items, but.
What if you did, what if you said sex?
What's the difference, seven?
Seven.
Thirty-eight thousand. There you go.
Any councilor have a problem with that?
Sold.
We know there's wiggle room in any budget, we know there is wiggle room overall, so, and that's okay.
And then if it doesn't smell.
Anything else in vehicles?
They yell at me, that's fine.
I originally had twelve, so you know, I don't know what I was wigging in.
Going once, going twice.
Thirty-eight thousand for that one.
Sold. Anything else for?
Solid waste.
Solid waste.
You already took thirty out for?
Fifty-seven, page fifty-seven.
Oh, thank you.
Uh, fifty-seven?
Thank you, thank you.
When do we start getting punch?
I think you're there.
So you guys.
No, but this is when we get some money off, so we might as well run.
Taken out the thirty thousand, right? Or you shifted it over to roads?
Yeah, so it's a two point three, four percent increase in that budget right now.
There's no big changes to this budget, this is, uh, we obviously have the transfer station open one and a half days a week, a Saturday and a Wednesday for half a day. And, um, we currently use Casella for the curbside pickup on top of that. The post landfill testing is continuing monitoring, that's been pretty status quo and, uh.
Rick, what if, I'm going to suggest one.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
General supplies down to fifteen.
Ding ding ding, you win a prize. I won't push my button this time.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. Yeah, just do it, I think that's easy.
I agree.
Fifteen?
Yep.
And twenty.
What about eleven, six, thirty-six? Go ahead, ask me how I came up with eleven, six, thirty-six.
What is a household hazardous?
Well, how did you get to eleven? No, I just want, just real quick, just, could you answer, Rick, general supplies, did you, you know, shut down on those or?
Uh, well, the bag order, in the bag order, in the recycle bins. That's what those are.
Yeah.
We, sometimes we can, the recycle bins, a lot of times now, people will use their own type of bin and put a sticker on it.
So I mean, is eleven, six, I'm not, I was more being humorous, but is the eleven, six, thirty-six a realistic number or is it not?
No, no, the fifteen is more realistic.
What do we spend in fourteen?
Uh, sixteen thousand, six hundred thirty-nine.
Alright, you win a price.
And I think we ordered recycle bins that year, we didn't order recycle bins this year, so that's why you see that number.
Okay, so that's.
The cost of trash bags are up this year, too.
So that's five grand, minus.
Yeah, we just took a big order.
Council Thompson.
Um, my other question is on, Gary, I'm not sure where you got to on that household hazardous.
Yeah.
What is that, why did that go, I don't have fourteen open in front of me.
It was nothing in fourteen, they spent zero.
Nothing in fourteen, eighty-three, forty-five and fifteen, how did that go to twelve? Can we, can we knock that out a little bit?
Every other year, we typically do the household, so you'll see it one year and then not see it. And people are just trying to judge, it was much more busier, we were fortunate with the rates, we got great rates, the type, time of year we did it. But a lot of people took part in it, we get a lot of inquiries about it because we don't do it every year, so it's just trying to roll the dice with it, you know?
Ten grand?
We did it for that last time, so.
So now we're up to seven, if we like that?
Do we have an issue with that being ten grand?
No issue, or you do?
Unless it does.
No, I don't. I don't even need an erase.
Anything else on solid waste? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You want to do capital reserves?
Uh, sure. Capital reserve, okay?
Does Rick need?
Bill, could we have?
No, it's every department.
Or you guys keep going and I'll be back in a second.
Yeah, sure.
Consciousment capital reserves. How long are you thinking of going?
Wanted to be down to twelve thirty, maybe one.
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three.
Well, if we're, if one fifteen would be done, done.
We, yeah, because I could hammer up the rest of it.
Let's.
Well, are you going to cut anything or?
Most of them are flat, they're zeros.
See how it goes.
I proposed a budget of six hundred twenty-five thousand, one hundred and fifteen, they, the capital improvement committee did one million, three hundred and fifteen, nine, three, zero.
What page are we on?
Fifty-three. The reason I, I agree with the recommendations of the capital improvement committee, I have to come in with a budget that I think that we can afford. You know, there are options, there's two things, one, some of the projects that are recommended, we could do currently with monies that are in the capital reserve funds. However, there are a number of things, we need to make sure we, we continue to fund the, the amounts. The other option would be in the future, what many communities do with capital improvement programming is issue debt.
Issue what?
Issue debt. And what you do is you have a flat, you, you retire debt, you replace it with debt. So you continuously have, the capital projects continue, but you just fund it through issuing bonds annually. But I'll let them go.
Go, go. Hi, Rosie, I'm Quox, Chair of the CIP, here with Diane Harding, who is the town planner and who really does a great job. And I'll hand it over to you to explain, okay? Because she's, I kind of keep the committee in control and she, she's the expert in all these other things.
Oh, thank you, I didn't know I was the expert, but I try my best. Thank you. Every year, the capital improvement plan committee meets and we distribute a request for proposals, if you will, to each of the department heads, asking them to put together their list of capital improvements for the year. And there's two different types, there's equipment and there's projects which are over fifty thousand dollars in value. And we have put together a presentation booklet for the committee and for the town council as part of your budget process. And in the report, we have all of the requests that we received by department and we've incorporated photographs. And there's a narrative for each project and, which also addresses how the expenditure will improve service in the community and cost data. And then there's a six-year budget. Under the state RSAs, in order to have impact fees, we are required to have a capital improvements plan that looks at capital costs over a six-year period. That's one of the prerequisites. That's one of the prerequisites for having an impact fee program. And that's an important, uh, piece of our overall land use planning program in town. So this year, we received several requests, as you can see, and in the booklet, I just wanna, in addition to having project request forms for each project, we also have a, an overall summary on page four, which shows by department, the requests and, um, what the recommendations were from the CIP committee, and there's a brief description of each one. And then on page three, is a composite, if you will, which gives an overview of all the requests by departments. And you'll see in the middle, there's a, a band of yellow, and the first column is what the CIP committee's recommendation is, and the second column is what the priorities, um, are in terms of the various projects. And these were assigned by the committee, uh, following a review of the projects and meetings with each of the department heads, and we had, um, tours this year of the town facilities, which I think was very helpful to, uh, for us all to gain an understanding of what the town's needs were. So overall, the CIP committee this year is recommending, um, improvements in the amount of one-point-eight-four-two million dollars, and that includes, um, town expenditures as well as water and sewer expenditures. And I don't know if you want me to go through each project or if you have specific, uh, recommendations. I know Rosieanne has some concerns about some of the reductions that were suggested, and I'll let her address those on behalf of the committee.
Just for clarification, you're discussing one-point-three of their proposals. This is general fund, not, we're not doing water and sewer at this point.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I did not realize that. So, yes, it would be, if three-quarters of the way down, you'll see the town general fund request of one-point-three million dollars roughly and change. Um, so I guess with that, I'd be happy to answer questions and share with you, um, the board's concerns.
The board's concerns.
Uh, what are your, go ahead.
The, um, as, as I sat here listening to the members this, this afternoon, um, one of our main concerns that coincided with yours was the, the roads. We felt that the roads were very important to, um, uh, put more money into that for long-term, and just when I heard the litany of roads that Rick had, I mean, we did find out that new road would have to be construction all the way up, not just maintenance with the surface. You, you wanna ask, how many miles of road need just a surface and how many miles of road need construction? And I was glad to hear that the sidewalks were put on hold, because we can probably use that money towards, uh, road improvements. That was, um, one of the concerns, and I don't know if anyone up there has concerns, or Diane, can you identify any others?
Um, well, I know that, uh, fire safety, we met with, um, Chief Malowski, and his capacity is fire chief, and he had some requests in for some protective, personal protective equipment and, um, indicated to us that, um, if the, um, gear is not replaced by two thousand seventeen, it will not meet flow testing requirements, and in effect, the town won't be able to put fires out, because the equipment, um, and I can, let's see if I can find that page for you.
Is that the SCBA?
Yes, it's in his, um, equipment budget, which, if you hold on a minute, I can give you a page, that is. See if this...
And that's one we're, we're talking about fifty grand for, is it? Right, Steve. And what, what is, while you're doing that, Diane, what is, what is Rick gonna need for that?
Four hundred, he requested four hundred and eight thousand dollars.
No, no, but what is he gonna need to...
For the replacement of those, that specific equipment.
He has, he's requested for the protective gear, um, a hundred sixty-nine thousand, five hundred, and that's for twenty-four, um, CB...
CBAs.
SCBA. And they need to be replaced, and that, to us, certainly seemed like a high priority if they can't put out fires, because they don't have adequate protective gear. I think that's something that is deserving of, uh, the town's attention.
So I'm just asking, what, how much do they, what's, what is that total that they need?
He said a hundred and sixty-nine.
And that's it?
So that was...
Is there anything else?
And what exactly did the...
On page fourteen of the packet.
On page fourteen. And what exactly did the, um, town administrator knock that down to?
Fifty.
Fifty thousand odd from the one sixty-nine?
No, from four hundred and eight.
They're talking about the breathing apparatus.
So the one, the challenge is the one sixty-nine is the purchase cost in however many years when they buy it. So it's, they're saving money annually towards the eventual purchase.
Right, and the cost that's quoted there is for twenty-four air packs. And also, there's a request for replacement of mobile, uh, radios and portable radios, which need to be replaced as well, and that is for a total of a hundred forty-six thousand.
That's already in his operating budget.
Okay, all right.
So is that part of that?
So, I think the primary concern was the protective gear, because of the urgency of the situation.
He's got three hundred and twenty, if I'm looking at this, is that right?
Three hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
Plus fifty would be four twenty-seven, right?
Yep.
Not four, no. Excuse me, three seven, three seventy-sevens, something like that.
Didn't we say that was for equipment, I mean, for vehicle?
There isn't, there isn't a vehicle request for eighty-nine thousand, two hundred fifty dollars, and that was...
Got a couple lights on.
For replacement. He's not replacing anything this year. Go ahead.
What they wanna clarify for vehicle? Anything, a fire engine is not gonna come from this. A fire engine is usually bonded or leased, because just the, the amount of it. So we're talking with the three twenty-seven, you're talking like truck, like regular vehicles, like a thirty, sixty thousand dollar vehicle.
Fire sedan and...
Right, nothing large. And ambulances come from the ambulance fund.
Okay.
Uh, Counselor...
Sorry, my question was in reference to, talking about household hazardous waste. I had one more question, but Rick had, uh, took off before I had a chance to get it out.
All right.
But I'd still like to have the opportunity whenever it's convenient to get that out of my system.
Okay. Next up, we have Rick in here. We'll talk, Counselor Thompson?
Okay.
You have a leg? Counselor Weinstein?
So, just a question about the vehicles. Because the request form that we got was for a pumper and, and a tanker, I mean, those are the sorts of things that are on the request form, so if we're not going to be using the capital reserve fund for those items, why do we go through the process? I mean, I feel like I kinda, you know...
Because there's two different things here. The budget is the capital reserve fund, funding the capital reserve fund. The capital improvement plan is to lay, lay out what capital projects we need to do. So, yeah, you do need to continue that in the capital improvement.
This is backup, as I think Counselor Levy said. This is backup for upcoming projects that we requested.
The, the, what you're discussing...
Doesn't mean it'll be expended from this fund.
But they're asking for funds.
What, what you're, no, what they're saying is the cost of the, of the project. The asking for the funds is, is the budget. For example, recreation had a, a significant amount of money in there for replacing the parks. They were requesting funds for that. I said, no, use your own, you, you currently have X amount in the capital reserve funds, withdraw it from there. That's why I reduced it. So there's two, two different entities here, there's the plan...
There's two pots of money, is what you're...
Right, well, not one pot of money, two things. One's the plan, which is the committee comes forward with and schedules and shows everything, and the second part is how...
How to spend it.
Right, and the second is how to fund it.
But can't some of the money come, in all fairness, can't some of the money come from the CIP if it's appropriate and some of the money, some of the money come from the general fund?
You're using the wrong term.
Okay.
CIP is not a, is not a funding mechanism. A CIP is a document. Capital reserve funds is the funding mechanism.
Okay, so capital reserve funds, it, some of the things that are appropriate to use those for, you can, you can fund, and some of those requests we can put into the general fund?
Budget.
In the budget, okay.
That's what I meant.
The capital reserve is general fund.
Yes, so that, so they do have, sometimes they come to us and ask, and that's when you say you have it in the capital reserve funds.
Perfect example would be if, if Rick needed to come forward with a new pumper, I would probably have in my next year budget, a line item for pumper lease. And you would fund it that way.
Here's where I think Counselor Weinstein is bringing up, the, having sat on the CIP for a couple of years, like, inside that document, I guarantee he has it as though he is saving up money to buy a pumper.
Yeah.
So in his plan...
How it was presented.
It is saving up to purchase, not any idea of a bond going out for it. I think that's also the way this community just is operated. So community has been, that's why we have no debt, or low debt, is because we just, like, we're savers instead of loners.
Right.
Borrowers.
Very nice.
Um, that being said, I would love to see the capital improvement plans, much more, and the request for funds to go into the capital reserve funds, accurately reflect whether we're gonna plan on bonding or plan on saving. Because right now, it looks like it's entirely savings, if you look at the plans.
Which is why, in the past, when I've had those questions, because we've had requests come to the council, and they'll say, well, it's in the capital improvement plan. Well, what's the plan? So if we have, and this came up during our, during the CIP meetings as well, if we have three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in the fire department capital improvement plan, or, fund, sorry.
Capital reserve.
Capital reserve fund, what are, what is the plan to use that money? And that is not clear.
And that is...
And hasn't been clear.
And that is what...
That is what this is.
And it's not, no, but it's not.
But this is what, this is what the capital...
That's what you're saying.
And this is what the capital improvement committee should say, is, look, Rick needs to buy a truck. We recommend withdrawing it from the capital reserve fund, because there's X amount of money in there, or we recommend putting fifty thousand dollars a year over the next five years. Or, and then it comes to me.
Yeah, or take some out of there and take some out of there.
And I say, no, my recommendation to the council is if we need the truck, we will lease it, or we will, we'll pay, do payments at a later date, because, and, for, again, I'll bring up Rec. Rec wanted to put this money aside for the, the two parks and stuff. I said, no, you already have the money, withdraw the funds to do it. Don't, don't put more money on the tax rate.
Right.
So that's what the difference is.
It's still getting done.
It's still get done. It's, it's the philosophy and how to do it.
And I, I just have to, I don't disagree with that philosophy, because the check is the council to some degree, because Steve does generally come to the council and give us his opinion as to why he's doing something. I suppose at this point, we could say, we don't wanna do it that way, and we wanna increase the capital reserves or whatever, and don't do it that way.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, there's the philosophy behind it, right? Like, do we say, we just do not wanna bond, so we're gonna put more into capital reserves? I think that there is a near universal misunderstanding in, of the capital reserve process.
Right.
And you have individuals coming to the capital improvement committee and being like, it's a five-year document, here's how I'm gonna save for it for five years.
Right.
As opposed to being like, how are you taking the money that's already there and planning over the next five, like, the five or six or seven years, however long the document is, and being like, how am I allocating that and what else do I need to save for that? Several of them are done very well. It seems like habitually, year after year, or most of them, it seems as though they think that it's just that document, as opposed to like, the money here plus. I don't know what it was like this year, I wasn't...
Yeah, that's what I see Steve coming in as, is he's the other side as far as how it will be actually expended. So there's the plan for it, and then when it goes to Steve, he's gonna filter it through, saying, okay, well, this is, this is what we need or what we wanna spend money on based on the CIP, but it could come from capital reserves, that he could put it in the budget, he could whatever. He, he's more addressing how or from where it will be expended.
But that's part of the, if I may, that's part of the process. If you look at the form, the bottom half says, okay, how are you gonna find, this is what you wanna buy.
Right.
You wanna have an eight hundred thousand dollar stormwater project, um, you have fifty thousand dollars available now, how are you gonna fund it over the next six years? And not only, so is it gonna come out of general fund, capital reserve funds, bonds, grants through DES or impact fees? Is it gonna come on from some other source? And we expect that everybody will identify their financing plan...
Correct.
So that they can achieve their goal. And it doesn't have to come out of the capital reserve fund, as Counselor Masaro has pointed out. That's only one funding source or mechanism.
But, uh, when they make a recommendation, correct me, if I could, or explain it to, they make a recommendation, is it, is it, um, still within the control of the council in conjunction with the administrator to, if they wanted to change the way that money gets expended?
Yeah.
So they're, they're really advisor, in all fairness, they're making a suggestion, they're making a recommendation, right? And then we sit here and we go, how much do we wanna either increase the tax rate, bond, or how do you wanna do it?
They look and prioritize what large projects and capital projects we have over the next six years. They present that project, that report to me. I determine, they make recommendations how to fund it. I recommend to the council how to fund it. And then the council makes that recommendation, the next step, by going, by approving the budget for the budget committee, because...
Or changing.
Right, for example, if, if, in all honesty, if I was gonna come in with a one-point-three million dollar capital improvement plan, you would have an article to have a bond, 'cause I would not do, we would not raise a tax rate by one-point-three million dollars. I would have, I would issue bonds for that. So that's why, and I, and also, I look at the proposals and I say, well, the reason why it was X amount is because they wanna do XYZ, we already have the cash on hand, withdraw it to do the project, and I come to the council for that, so that's why I reduce it.
Well, and I know, too, Al Zink, who's the, uh, CIP rep from the school board, had concerns, I think, in the Rec Department, they had listed a hundred and sixty-seven thousand in, uh, balance. And we wanted to know how much of that was already allocated for certain projects and so forth and so on. We wanted clarification on that.
And, and that is where we, and, you know, for example, that's, and that's part of the thing. We're putting all that money aside, but we, we never withdraw it due to the projects.
I wouldn't, I mean, some, some we are, some we aren't.
Yeah.
Counselor, pardon?
Yeah, I, I think one example of the, the uncertainty, where the uncertainty is in this process is if you look at the McAllen Dam, we just still are dealing with a great deal of uncertainty. I mean, I think, I think at the end of the day, you know, it's showing a hundred thousand dollars, this is page twelve, it shows like a hundred thousand dollars a year going out into the future. At some point, that hundred thousand dollars, it may not be money going to capital reserve, at some point, it could be bond payment, because we're gonna be bonding on something, but, but it, we're still a long ways from really having any ability to tighten estimates But, but we're still a long ways from really having any ability to tighten estimates down to know what this is actually gonna cost.
Same with the stormwater.
Just process-wise, what Dover and Portsmouth do, is part of the budget process, there's another document. It's the capital improvement budget. They usually just, when they vote on that, they're also voting on issuing bonds. Because they, they're, it's not a, not a bad thing to issue bonds. It's good for a community to have debt. And it helps with your bond rating. So what you do is they just retire it and bring it back in. And it's flat. For, for example, the, if you know Dover just passed the $86 million high school. The impact is very low because they're retiring other debt to replace that debt. And their tax rate is leveled because they have a constant debt.
Right. Those are the moving, some of the moving pieces.
Well, Counsel Mike, say it.
Well, to take what you were saying before to the next level. So in the, the fire department request, I think, it was around $400,000. So, but you're recommending 50.
Mm-hmm.
So the, so what is the narrative to that?
My recommendation.
Because, because you know, he's asking for the, so the equipment that he needs. Where is, are we going to do that project or not do that?
If he needs a hundred.
And that's the disconnect for me.
If he needs $160,000 for SCBA's, take out 6, 80 this year and buy half of them. Take, when you get the 50 next year, take out another 80, buy the other half.
Because he's got 327 in his reserves.
Plus 50.
But do you understand where the disconnect is for me?
I understand.
On that. Because it's just, okay, no, $350,000 is cut. But where are we gonna get that equipment from?
But that's.
And how are we going to fund it?
That's the way I do that. And I come to the council later. That's not the CIP's at that point.
No, I'm talking as a counselor.
And that's why we're putting 50 in.
It's almost like we need like a narrative.
Exactly.
The narrative change between what the capital improvement plan that was briefed to the committee was to what the capital improvement plan that we are now, the adjusted one according to your.
And I will say some of it is just elimination. I don't, I just need, I want to continue to put money in there.
Part of the plan that might already be in there.
Right. I don't have a specific amount because we're not ready to do that project yet. For example, the dam in the stormwater. I want to build that up, but I don't have a number yet.
It's a prudent number.
I want to, there was one additional item that the CIP committee felt very strongly about. And that was playground replacement at the Leo Leon Rock Field. There's some old 1980 vintage playground equipment, the old, the timber wood playground structures. And they're really unsafe and they're dangerous and they really need to be replaced. And the CIP committee changed the priority of the project from necessary, which the department headed and indicated. And in the record, it is identified as an urgent project. And the CIP committee went so far as to say, we would like to see this project, and this is our recommendation, funded immediately for next summer so that this can be updated because of the potential safety risk.
That's the recommendation.
And they felt very, very strongly about it. And the dollar amount for that project is 24,500. And the request that Mr. Hilton had put together was for about 26,000 overall. So that's why that amount appears as the recommendation of the CIP committee.
So I'm gonna let the minister go, but I'm gonna say that he's got 134,000.
And that's why I didn't.
We have addressed that previously.
But we have a hundred, but we're putting 18 in.
We're putting 18 in to start replenishing it because there's gonna be two projects. I told him to get proposals for two projects. One is that because the CIP committee recommended. And two is for the splash pad. So 18 is going.
Splash pad's in his revolving fund budget.
No, it's not.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think he said it earlier.
It's a line item. It's not funded.
It's not funded.
But it's a line item.
No. It's a cap, to do the construction is to just withdraw those two things from the 134 plus the 18.
Which Jim was clear about when we toured. He said, you know, he, he put it in the plan, but he knew that he had funds available.
And the, and the 18 is actually looking at, he has to replace the bus soon in fiscal year 17.
Okay.
So.
So, so basically, there's enough money in his 134. That's not allocated for anything else that that playground can be used.
Why, that's the thing. That when you keep putting this money aside, they need to withdraw it at some point too.
We need to tell us that.
There needs to be a plan.
Every year we try to fine tune our system. It gets better every year, I think. But one of the things that we talked about is next year, having the departments tell us, okay, you have $168,000. How do you intend to spend that money? What are your current priorities for this year? And of course, it's, the CIP is an exercise of reevaluation every year because things may change. What may, may have been a priority last year in the coming year may not be. So it forces people to look at things on a long-range basis over the course of six years rather than your annual budget, which you look at in just one timeframe. And to, you know, look at the overall costs. And also beyond, you know, if you're gonna have to have a bond for a project, it's gonna go beyond six years. It's gonna be a 20-year bond. So, you know, what does that mean to the town in terms of impact on the town's tax rate and so forth? So it's a work in progress. And I think every year we try to fine tune it so it works better. And it's clearer for everyone who's involved in it.
Counsel Thompson.
Based on what Diane said, yeah, I, I agree. I think that earlier when we were here, Jim Hilton did address that he can handle the 18 within his current operating reserve. So taking that CIP, actual implementation or expenditure of, of the funds, he already has those. So my feeling is that he does not need the additional 18, 666. I actually in my brain figured that we could reduce that to 5,000. And I kind of looked at the same thing in other areas, whether it was stormwater, McAllen Dam. My suggestion is to reduce those by half, by 25,000 each. And then I had the same discussion with myself about police vehicles and, and fire. And Public Works could be in there. Again, taking a look at the CIP and saying, okay, what's already in the funds? So that the CIP says, okay, we want to do this, this, and this. The funds, if, if I felt that they were already in.
Adequate.
The CIP, in the capital reserves, then I didn't see the need to add more to it necessarily, unless there was something big coming down the pike. So, you know, I felt 25,000 out of stormwater. And how this, how this goes about is certainly up to everybody else. Taking 25 out of stormwater, 25 out of McAllen Dam, 25 out of fire, 48 out of police. I'm probably off on that. That was an initial thing. But again, because I was looking at what funds we already have in there, I get that we want to plan out and not run it down necessarily. But my feeling was that we could pull that out. And then pulling about 14 out of Rec facilities gets us to about 130. Now, whether, whether we pull it out of there and put that much more into roads or something like that. Again, I'm not trying to cripple anything, but I am looking at what is already in the capital reserve funds. That doesn't just get to sit there in my view as, as a piggy bank to hold, only to put more in. I mean, we have, it, it is all revolving. So that's really my thing. It's not meaning to be punitive. I want to fund what needs to be funded. I'm looking at priorities. But I'm also looking at the fact that we have money in capital reserves already because it has already been deemed a priority. And the actual expenditure needs to come out of there rather than in essence, collecting it twice. I get, maybe I'm not saying that right. A lot of this, I feel, has already been collected.
So it's Counsel Pike's next, but I do want to say, especially the vehicle ones, if you actually look at the plans.
Yeah.
It is like replenishing for what the plan has taken out the next year. And I would say like the police one is probably.
Yeah, that, that one, I know, and I'm rekindling.
It's very obvious like he is replenishing just enough so that he can purchase according to the schedule. And he's actually went from a five-year, like a, he expanded the replacement thing because the council kept like pushing off, I think DPW there to two, right? They're keeping trucks longer because like certain councils, I don't give credit to Counsel Levy, kept asking like, why, like, why are you buying it now? Could you get another year out of it? And so now the replacement cycle is actually longer than it was before.
And, and that's as far as putting in, you know, we put in 46 or whatever it was last year for a vehicle. We're gonna expend it. Are we getting a new police vehicle every year? Are we, you know, those sorts of things. So I'm trying to weigh that. So again, I'm not committed on the, on the 48, taking that out of the other. But I think some of the other ones, we do have plenty of funds there that we could make this work.
Counsel Pike.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I'd be interested in what town councilor has to say on that. On the McAllen Dam, I think if we, you know, at some point, the amount of money we're gonna be spending is higher. We're gonna get into engineering. We're gonna get into changes in the dams.
But is that bonding?
No, engineering, you have to, you have to do the engineering before you issue the bonds. So that's a, that one I think is.
And I don't think we want to put numbers in there that we have a pretty high degree of confidence are gonna be higher than the amount of money we'll have when we get to them. So.
Stormwater management.
Stormwater, the same situation is we're engineering to get there.
Right.
I mean, any, any large projects will have to issue debt. But this is just, before you issue debt, you gotta have a plan. And that's what this is putting aside for.
Counsel Ryan, say.
Well, my light was on for a different reason, but in response to that, I, I agree with Counselor Thompson that when we have, and, and again, this goes back to my issue with all of this. You know, when there's 282 or 273 in building improvements and there's no narrative. So we don't know what that money, we don't know what that money is earmarked for. I think that's the problem. So then when there are additional requests, it's really hard to decide what should be funded, what shouldn't be funded. Okay, there's, so there's. That money, I'm assuming, was put in there for a reason. I'd like to think.
Don't assume.
And if not, then why aren't we?
Part of it.
Why aren't we spending it?
But then, but then we need a plan for that money.
And that, and part of it is, it was, I think it was just put aside, right? The CIP is the plan. You know we have certain projects that we need to do. Some of that money was just, I, I will say it was just put aside and put in a savings account with not a definitive plan in the past. So we are sitting on cash on hand. So that's why we started doing things such as replacing carpets, replacing paint, withdrawing from that to do regular general maintenance things around the building. I heard even when I started that people were putting money aside because it, something might happen. And I'm like, well, we don't do that. Right. And so that's why we're, we're not trying to withdraw it. We, do we have a definitive plan for that? No, because we're hearing, we got the CIP. We know it's higher than that. I don't have enough money to do the CIP. So I, I can try to knock things off at once in a while by looking at it and say, okay, I could take that off. But I've got 50 grand to replace the HVAC. But it's not, i- if you want it, a definitive annually, okay, I'm gonna do XYZ for that money, then I would just come in every year and say, give me $300,000 and I'm gonna do XYZ. So.
Now, were you talking about the 50,000 that Carrie from the library is asking for her?
Oh, no, no, no.
Oh, okay.
He's just saying generally.
Okay, just in general.
So we have Levy, Pickering, Pike. I'm sorry.
Well, and actually that dovetails into my next comment, which I think that this document that you put together, Diane, is a helpful start so that we have that on an annual basis. And I know that this was a lot of work. So I just appreciate having this information in one place. I think that that will be really helpful moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you.
Not being on the CIP committee, what I think I'm hearing is some of the CIP is, is well documented and annotated. And there's a purpose and people understand specifically and precisely what the money's gonna be used for. In some areas, it's not as clear-cut. And in some areas, we just don't legitimately know. For example, stormwater. Let me just get it out, Stephen, then you can respond. Stormwater or the dam, we just don't know. I mean, respectfully, and I'm sure the state will not write a check, but they could come out with guidelines for stormwater that are specific and that we could then put out in an RFP in theory. I mean, we still may need some engineering, but they may come out with guidelines, chances are they won't. But I mean, we don't know. So it would probably be, and my concern with, with some of the CIP stuff that we put money in because we think we're gonna need it is it then becomes a self-fulfilling prophecy. If the money's in there, then we're gonna find a reason to spend it in lieu of putting it in the budget because, okay, we need to do this and maybe that should be a budgetary thing and removed from the CIP. And I'm just wondering, and I'm just bringing it up because enough has been said about it. You know, maybe we, we could reevaluate the CIP and determine what things should or shouldn't be. You know, maybe there's some things that don't need to be within the CIP. I don't know. I'm just, I'm just hearing this some.
Why not a plan?
There are, there are two different things. One, the plan is 100% better than it used to be. It's a more planning document than before. It was just a list of what we need to expend. So putting money aside for certain projects is, is still prudent instead of putting in the operating budget. The other part of that is, because if you put it in the operating budget and you don't use it and it goes to the next, you lose it. And you, you have to reappropriate it again the next year. Even though you may, and it goes in the fund balance. This way, you're putting it aside and saying, okay, we may use 15 of it this year, but we're gonna use the remaining 60 of it next year. So we only have to appropriate it once versus appropriating it annually. And then it, to go that self.
Filling prophecy.
Thank you.
Why is that badness?
No, no, because then it stays in your budget. And the councils change, the administrators change, and all of a sudden, there's a $60,000 line item that just stays there because, oh, we, we keep that for engineering.
Well, I, I would play the devil's advocate and say it stays in the CIP forever if it's not used. And, and if it's in the, if it's in the operating budget and it's there and it's not used, you can eliminate it. So that would be my response to that.
We've actually eliminated capital reserve funds. And we've discontinued them. And when I first got here, we discontinued a number of them. And those monies go back to the fund balance. So we do review these. I mean, I, I can't see any of these at this point in time to discontinue. And I, and if I did, I'd say, let's just, you know, discontinue one of them.
Well, there's one, but that'll take care of it. So, the downtown.
Yeah, yeah. That, that one, yeah, you can't, we just can't pay it off. That's the problem.
Right.
But yeah, I mean, that's the other thing. If, if we had something in there like a one-time project and it's still sitting in there, then I'd say, get rid of it and have it go to fund balance and eliminate it. So.
I agree with Pike, Mike, say.
Yeah, I think Town Administrator Fornia partially answered my concern. And what my concern is, going beyond today, down the road, how are we gonna continue to get in a little bit deeper not knowing where all this money's sitting in this fund? What all this money in this fund was supposed to be and is intended to be in the future? Someone needs to be following that each year.
And, and I, that's where we are now. We have the document now that we're able to do that.
And I get you on that.
Yeah. And the perfect example is the, back to that recreation discussion. They wanted additional funds in here. We're looking at it and say, no, we already got the money. Why are we, we don't need to fund it twice. And then in the future, we'll be able to say that, look, you know, I, I thank you for the plan. I'm gonna knock these things out this year.
And actually expend it. I think that's, that's the best example. Rec is, is a fairly easy one for me to comprehend. Is, okay, you've already collected it. So yes, it stays in the plan, but the actual expenditure means we don't fund it again in the capital reserve. We actually are going to expend it. Okay.
Yeah, I, just to echo what Counsel Mike said earlier, I think it would be nice to have, if, if it were possible to put in any of these reports somewhere, the narrative about what that. So that when we came time to see it and saw what, this is why it's being altered. This is what's being changed. This is the plan going forward. I think sometimes tabular isn't adequate and the narrative would be great.
Now, is, is that something that you feel the department heads are able to do on their own? Or that's something that Matt and Steve, so you would be able to get that narrative for the CIP meetings for next year?
No, no, no. This is for the budget. This is.
You're talking about the adjustments he has made from what you proposed.
Yes, but for, but for next year, when we go into the CIP, like we're asking for a narrative of the, the dollar amount that's listed when they apply for, for money through us. We want to know what the breakdown is of that money and if it's allocated for certain projects already. Does the department head do that? Or is that you and Matt that would?
What?
Well, the department head should do that. That's their department.
And what I think, what the next step for the CIP will be, another column, which is the town administrator's recommendation. If you look at some of the ones that are for samples, there's a thing that would say the town manager's recommendation. I would go in and say, okay, I don't think this is a high priority. I know the committee does. Or I'll say, I don't think this should be funded through capital reserves. I think it should be funded through.
Or it's already been funded.
Right. Or it's already been withdrawal. So that's the kind of thing, that's the next step.
As long as we, and whenever we do ask for information, we always ask for justification.
Yeah.
We want to know why you're asking for this, the importance of it and so forth. So we would, if we're gonna put something, another line item in there, another column for the TA, we would expect the same thing from the TA. If, if you'd be able to put justification into why you feel we shouldn't, shouldn't do.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
That'd be great. That'd be very helpful.
I think once you have that document, it will grow so much easier the next year.
Yep.
Exactly.
So a lot of this will continue to the next year. You'll see what's.
We're trying as a committee to do things early, stop things earlier, do sidewalks, ask for. Diane's come up with a great format for asking department heads and some of the members this year, such as Zink has really asked for specific things. And each step really helps us in not asking the council for, for money that we really don't need.
Counsel Ryan, say.
Well, again, not to beat a dead horse, but much like what Counselor Thompson said, with Rec is very clear, right? So we're gonna, we're going to expend those funds. It's easy. But then what is the status, I guess, of some of these other projects that are there? So we have, and then that's what I'm looking for. Not today, but you know, we have $273,000 in the building improvement fund. And then, and there are some building improvement requests that have been made. So, so how are we going to fund that? And are we going to fund it? And if not, what are we gonna do with that $273,000? Because when I look at the general fund for our capital reserve, it's $3 million. And then with the other funds that we have, it's $4.7 million. We're arguing over $1,000 or $500 here and there. And I just look at that pot of money and think, some of this is, to me, there's no plan. So it's.
Self-fulfilling prophecy.
So I just think that, you know, more conversation would be helpful. That's all.
So first off, I, I agree. I think we have a ton of money sitting here, a bunch without a plan, that probably would be returned rolls like when we closed the day. So.
They asked for 1.3. I said no because we're sitting on.
I think we need.
I'm not arguing with Steve.
So I think we need like the long-term conversation as to like, what are we doing with all of these? Think in the very immediate future, what contributions do we want to put in for FY '17?
And are we still funding these, the, the ones that we're questioning?
Right. Well, and my thing is, right now, they, what he has proposed is 625K of.
Down from a million three or whatever it was.
Yeah. So the question is.
Which ones are absolutely imperative?
Right. Yeah. Or are, are there ones that we're not gonna fund here or we're gonna fund less? That is really the, like the brass tacks of what we need to decide now.
Counsel Thompson recommended one for the recreation to go down to 5,000.
Does that fit within the plan?
Yeah, because we, yeah, we've got money to do the two projects that we have.
And still save for the bus?
Yeah, we can put money aside for the bus.
And future projects.
I think there's some from Public Works that maybe we could.
Well, let's just do one at a time though, so we can get.
So.
Does anyone have an issue with moving recreation down to 5,000?
Sounds like a done deal.
Um, let me just see. As long as it doesn't impact the future project.
No, it's hard to, what would be helpful here and just for while these.
No, it's hard to, what would be helpful here, and just for while these, looking that up, is to know exactly how much money is in each, each one. No, no, here, though, so we can just see how much money is-
But that's the budget. That's a different-
I, I know, Steve. It's just, I'm just saying, even if it was in the narrative underneath to say, this is how much is in each one, I know we have a separate piece of paper. I'm just, then you could look at it quickly and say, wow, we've got, you know, 500,000 in there. Forget about it, or not.
See, it's not even, to me, the amount of money. It's the, is there a plan for that?
Right.
Well, I hear you, but that's, that's what's even more frustrating.
Right. That's really, yeah.
So, we're trying to make decisions on what to put in and what, so, you know, what would be better is if, if somebody checked off specifically which ones absolutely positively have a clear-cut plan.
Well, that's what the CIP committee does.
That's what we do.
Well, I, so can you tell me that from this? You know, in other words, do you feel-
Well, that's from the, from the thick document you have, the one that they handed out. That has actually the plan in it.
And where all the money's going, coming from?
Now, I'm gonna say it's not perfect. There's a lot of work.
So, I'm, I'm just trying to be practical. I'm saying, looking at this, do you feel comfortable that we have a great plan for all this? That's all.
I, right now, like, I don't. But I think that's a larger conversation. Right now, it is, out of the 625-
Well, we're gonna be funding it. We're gonna be funding it.
That's what I'm saying. Let's get to the 625 that we're talking about funding and determining, like, are there plans behind those numbers? And if not, can we reduce?
I agree. You just, you have to take that document and try to reconcile it, which ones have the plans and-
Right.
Right.
Which is the-
And the balance and-
Right. So, for the, for the rec department, given the fact that they have 134, 135K, based on the-
Jim did acknowledge that he had already asked for that, and the funds were already there, so.
The, so the question becomes, do they need the additional 1866, or 666, fun number, in order to keep their plan afloat?
I think we've already, sort of, everybody's agreed that we don't need that there. We can take that.
That's what Mike said, wait.
Oh, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Well, because they have several projects. So, it's not, and two of the projects, the splash pad and the, um-
Playground, right?
The playground equipment. It's about $95,000. Those two projects alone.
And they got 100 and something in there.
Right. But then, so then there's also the, the bus and the bleachers. So, I mean, I guess that the question is, does it make sense with the bus, with the van?
But we're not buying a van this year.
No, I understand that.
But they still need the money. Like, do you need to save money in order to buy the van?
That's right. Are you getting rid of everything, or are you just putting some aside?
We want, I think we want to reduce it so much that these other projects that there are gonna not be able to, you know what I mean? When it comes time to wanting the money to come out, there's not enough in there to take out.
But he said he would hand, he, he sat right here, I thought, and, and said he could, he could do all of this, and it wouldn't-
No, but he wasn't talking, he wasn't talking-
I don't think he was talking about the bus.
Talking about the bus. No, I understand that.
Because we didn't talk about capital improvement.
So, we don't want to do that.
Right.
Where he was talking about-
That'd be my concern.
How well they're doing during the year, and extra funds, and revolving funds, and 68 grand over, and yada, 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 so.
And his concerns about the bus was more on the age of the bus and not the mileage of the bus.
So, the life would go on for one year. That I can tell you.
So, I, to me, I guess the question becomes, do we have, like, as I said, enough information on each of these right now to make a vote?
I don't think we have enough information on it to reduce it.
I, I mean, to me, if we don't have enough information to-
We don't have enough information in, then to vote.
Then to put it in.
Yeah. With all due respect.
Yeah, but to me, it cuts both ways.
Sure.
Excuse me, but I think we did have enough information to put it in. Everything was brought to us by department heads. We took the time as a committee to take tours and to ask very, very in-depth questions. The only thing lacking was a narrative as to what the previous balance was for the upcoming year. We did do our job, Mr. Levy, and we did it well. And we improved it every year.
Well, then, is that 18666 necessary for this year, based on what you just said?
That is a, can I?
Sure.
That is a budgeting question. And that's a policy question that you folks need to decide.
Well, that's why-
We're telling you from a planning standpoint, strictly planning, not budgeting, that these are the long-term needs. And this is our capital improvements plan that's being recommended to you. The next step is to decide whether or not the town has the fiscal resources to do it and to finance it. So, I think it's-
Before we get into a tit for tat, which I really want to try to avoid here, I get what you're saying.
I'm just trying to clarify the role of the CIP versus the town council.
So, really, it actually turns to, and not to put you on the hot seat, but that's why-
No, I know, no.
Pay the mediocre dollars.
Yeah.
18666, you adjusted it.
I did.
Do you believe that that is necessary in order to finance their plans into the future?
Yes. Yes. That's my recommendation. I stand by my recommendation for my budget. Now, it's in the council's hands. If you don't believe that, then you reduce it.
Jim said I don't think he would reduce it.
Not the capital, not this, though.
Jim was talking about his operating, his general fund budget, not his CIP.
Yeah.
I'll play it back, but I thought that we did adj- yes, we were talking about that, but he did talk about capital reserves and whatever. And he understood that specifically the playground or whatever it was, he could, he could handle that. He is already, it's part of his CIP, but it's already in capital reserves. And I thought he sat right here and said that he could handle 13666 of this, because it was already in his capital reserve fund.
I don't know if we got that specific.
So, this is, in essence, putting it in twice.
I don't recall it being that specific in that conversation, but I'd have to look at it.
And not to be argumentative, but respectfully, and I, I do appreciate the, the changes we've made to the, to the overall budget. But Steve, that was your overall budget too, and we did find a few dollars here and there. And you didn't have, you know, heartburn in most of the cases where we reduced. So, it's not a criticism of your CIP acumen, but we did take 5,000 off of fuel here or there, or seven, you know, in different departments, you know, throughout this whole budget process, not the CIP, but before that. We reduced the budget in multiple areas. I don't know how much it all added up to, but it's probably under 100 grand. But we did reduce. Is, are there any places in the CIP that you feel?
I stand by my budget.
This is my bu- my budget was presented to the town council. It's now the town council's budget to make the decision. So, yes, my CIP stands as, as is. And yes, I reduced it, and I, I reduced it from the, the capital improvement committee, because that's what I thought we couldn't afford that.
He already, the town administrator, with his knowledge of what is out there in balances and what is funded and appropriated for use already, he already cut the capital improvement recommendations by probably half. So, to look for 5,000 or another thousand here or there, he already cut close to 600,000 from the CIP with, with his expertise as to what should be funded. And so, I think we've cut enough from the CIP. And that is his recommendation of 625. And I, I don't, I wouldn't suggest cutting it anymore.
Council Burns.
I'm just, what I was gonna say is just kind of echoing with these, what has just been said. And, you know, we have this committee that has gone, talked to the department head, had the conversations, have toured all the different places. They've made their recommendation. The town administrator has cut it by half already, pretty much. So, you know, for us to cut it more, I don't know that that's the responsible thing to do.
And I'll add one more thing. You always hear when you talk about budgeting wants versus need. The CIP is not even a want, that's a need. Those are things that are a need to be done. And even if I reduced it by half, that's, I'm putting off a need for a future date because of what we can afford. And that's, you know, and that, I'm, the CIP committee knows that in the process, and I talked to them at the beginning, I go, guys, you realize that you're gonna propose something for me, and I know that's the need, but my job is to present to the council what I think we can afford. And then the council comes back and says what they think the voters can afford, while they present it to the budget committee, and they do the next step. So, yeah. Right. So.
Yeah. Well, I, I guess I would add, if, if in fact, we're gonna stay with the town
administrator's recommendations on this, which I, I think I'm perhaps comfortable with, unless something becomes more clear cut, I think we've also identified ways where the process can be improved through a narrative. And if we look at pressures on the budget, it's those out years that scare me more than, than, than perhaps this one does. I mean, I'm not suggesting putting anything in there that doesn't need to be there, but I think we'll have, if we made a mistake and we put something in there that didn't absolutely need to be put in there in 2017, we're gonna have a year now to improve the process and, and find out, you know, what is, you know, try to trim where we can trim, reduce balances where we don't need them to be as high as they are, and, and continuous improvement in our process.
Does anybody know how much we reduce the budget by?
71 and a half.
Okay, 71.5K. So, just, I just can't help myself. This is, this is what I consider to be softest arguments. Respectfully, and this is not personal, the administrator made hearty recommendations within the budget. CIP is no different than the budget. It's just another part of the budget, as far as I'm concerned. We reduced it by 71K, and nobody seemed to have a whole lot of heartburn about that. And I'm not, I don't, I don't have enough information to speak intelligently in the CIP. But I can only say that, well, I just said it. I don't think we have enough information to make, to make any adjustments there. We did it during the, the rest of the other, the process. And people want to leave 600,000 in there, put it in for savings, fine. Figure out, it's almost a, I don't know, what's a buck on the tax rate? 711? 720? So, it's almost a buck on the tax rate. So, hey, it's a buck here, it's a buck there.
So, I actually, like, I have a high degree of faith in many of these. The two that I have less faith in are, well, the recreation one, just because of the bus cost and how many years you save for the bus. The other is the building improvement, because I feel like we've just sort of, like, used a bunch of the building improvement to paint the town hall and carpet the town hall. And I, I just don't know, like, how strong is our building improvement, building maintenance plan?
That-
Does it really require the 50 when we have 327s? What is it, 337 sitting there? How much is in there right now? 273.
273.
That's probably the one plan that I feel like we don't have a ton of a plan for. And do we really need to be adding money to that right now?
I mean, the, the cost that we're gonna have coming up is definitely the boiler system. And definitely, we'll say HVAC as a whole. And the other would be, we, we're gonna have to replace the windows.
Or insulation, one of the two.
We actually looked to the cost of blowing insulation into the building. The insulating company would not give us a quote because of the condition of our walls, that they, blowing it in would actually do damage to the walls. Yeah, because I, I thought it'd be a cheap fix last year. And they said, no, it's, the walls are too fragile on the side.
So, the need out of all of these is the HVAC and the boiler?
HVAC, boiler, yeah.
And what are those counts?
We have that. We gotta go through my CD. Do you have that in front of you?
What's that, the HVAC?
Yeah, I don't know which page it is.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Boiler replacement, oh, general, general project costs, they did it as one for the entire town hall. Boiler replacement, windows, bathrooms renovations for the basement is 250.
So, that's, and I blew the windows?
Yep. That's what they're estimating.
That was with the windows?
Yep. That's what the plan says.
250.
That sounds, doesn't sound like-
No, it's, I thought it was 175,000 just to redo the two downstairs public bathrooms.
Yeah, that was a price we did get.
Yeah, 175 for that. So, I don't see the 250 as nearly adequate for what has to be done.
Can I just make a comment? Being an employee who works in town hall, and I have for nine years, it seems to me that every, with all due respect to the, to the town administrator, every two weeks or so, we have to call in the people because there's a problem with the heating system. And for as many times as they've come and worked on the system, there is continually problems. And it's, it's ridiculous. Either my office is too hot or I don't have enough heat. And it's just, it really needs to be addressed. If, to be a safe, comfortable working environment for the employees.
And I realize the window situation. We only pay 75% because we have the, the other owner, 25% of the building. So, I think that's the reduction in the cost.
So, it's 250?
Yeah.
And that's the only planned work?
That's the one we have right now.
And we have 273 in there?
Yep.
So, do we need to put another 50 in when we have the money to cover the planned work? That's my question.
And there are two other projects that fall into buildings and grounds. And so, one is the roof replacement of DPW, which is a $166,000 project. And then the other is the, that's not under DPW?
No, that's under, that's buildings.
Buildings and grounds. And the, the fire station, second floor.
Redo it, like, refitting that until, like, a bunk room.
Which I, I eliminated because I didn't think it was necessary.
Yeah. You said they're having no problem getting coverage, and that's the argument for doing it.
But, but those are the other-
But the roof isn't necessary.
The roof is necessary.
What year is that going to be for?
It's 10,000, it's, it's, where does it say that?
20-
There was some of it that he was saying was more of a priority than other. Do you recall the conversation at DPW?
Yes, they're, they're getting leakage inside.
Definitely the roof because of the leakage and the drainage problems. That's why it was felt that that was an urgent project.
It's urgent.
Urgent, yeah.
No, 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 but what year he wants to have this done?
He doesn't, he doesn't say what year he wants to work on.
He doesn't say, just, yeah.
I was looking at the date here, and I was thinking, that's the date of the-
But the roof, the roof.
So, why wouldn't he do it next year with a 36-year-old roof and the money sitting in the capital reserve and damage being done to the interior?
Yeah.
Well, I, I know, is there, he said there's been anything done to the interior.
Yeah. He wanted it done this, in this fiscal year.
Within the 12th calendar.
That's what I thought.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So, that would greatly reduce the amount of money that's in that.
So, that eliminates half my capital reserve fund.
Right.
Council Thompson.
Could you, could you go over, I mean, for instance, let's take the police building. I know it's under our buildings, whatever. But let's say the police capital reserve fund has a half a million dollars in it. Can you tell me again, and I know we've been through this, if, let's say, because it's the police department building and the police capital reserve has this, but the building doesn't have enough, what happens when we play that shell game where we say, okay, police capital reserve has this, we can't transfer it out of one end to the other, right?
You can't withdraw, no. You can't withdraw from one capital reserve to another.
Okay.
Capital reserve is set up for a specific-
Didn't we do that, or from the water funds at some point?
Water funds are different. Water's a different situation.
All right.
General fund, it has to be specific to the purpose that's there. That's why actually we go in once in a while and we change the purpose, is to make it, like-
Yeah, I didn't know if there was an overlap, if there's a-
No.
Between building, because it's a police building that it could go into-
No, it's police vehicles, so specifically vehicles.
Okay.
Yeah, each capital reserve has a very explicit-
Yeah.
Purpose for it.
So, we're talking about two, two things. One, the number, like, what's in these capital reserves, which I think is the larger, like, the 4 million that's sitting here on the table. And does it have, like, what are the plans allocated against? And the other is the 625 that we're putting stuff in. So-
Additional to what we already-
Additional to what's in.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I guess the question is, is there anyone here who wants to make a motion to reduce any of this? Not a motion, but it's-
I'm gonna make a motion to reduce it by 100,000.
Which one?
Which one? You gotta, you gotta be very specific.
You gotta say which one. Capital reserves, you have to be specific. You've gotta be very specific.
Um, my totals are gonna be, my totals are gonna be off. I'm doing it on the fly. Public, 100,000 somehow combined with Public Works was one that stood out for me, in particular, fire and rec facilities. I just, I'm not doing the math now because I had my, I'm just not keeping track.
Yeah, but I, I got it. Somebody needs to tell me a number they want to take from each.
You may, you may have another vote, but I, I'll, no, no-
100 out of Public Works alone.
No disrespect. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna vote for taking 100,000 out of miscellaneous accounts right now. So, if we're, we wanna count votes, I'm gonna vote to keep it where it is rather than make you go through that process. I don't know if anybody else has-
Well, I didn't consider it miscellaneous accounts. I just named them off. If you, you If you, you know, look at a hundred thousand on Public Works.
I'm not accusing, I'm just saying that this is-
You're right, right.
I'm just saying it's being done really quickly, so.
Hundred thousand out of Public Works, I know.
That, that's where I'm standing on it.
I just think, I think some reduction there would be a benefit between this three million that we wanna know what's happening before we put another six hundred thousand in. I just think there's a better number. I mean, I'm not saying don't put any in, I know that roads is very important, and I'm, I'm behind that, but I think it's-
So, just one quick, Public Works has a hundred and thirty going in, right? And it's got five hundred and seventy in there now? So if we do this, they'll have seven hundred. Is that, is that accurate? Did I do that right?
Yeah.
Do they have seven hundred thousand dollars worth of work being done within the next two years?
Vehicles.
I'm just, I'm just, without going through the whole, I'm just- Dean knows the budget really well.
I have vehicle, three vehicles are gonna be replaced this year, they indicated. A large amount of it is in stormwater management, which we're gonna have-
I'm not talking about that, see-
Oh, okay, sorry, you're just looking at that for line item.
Yeah. You know, you're gonna have seven hundred K in-
Items replaced, you've got a, you got a bucket truck, the Mack roll-off, and then Ford F-250 plow. In this, that's in just this fiscal year.
Yeah, that's up to-
Bucket truck is eighty. The Mack roll-off is a hundred and forty. That's, that brings the big containers from the transfer station to the dump.
And the plow is-
And the plow is-
Twenty-four thousand dollar replacement.
So, so it was, I'm sorry, eighty, one thirty?
One forty.
Yeah, okay, so there's two twenty.
And then, uh-
Twenty-something?
Twenty-four.
If you look at, I'm sorry, but if you look at all the trucks that need to be replaced, some of them are, have gone past, you know, so some say twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, but if we're looking at twenty sixteen, seventeen, it's a lot more than seven hundred thousand dollars, if you add them up. I'm not saying that we're going to do all those trucks, but if they do all come due-
And are all those trucks, like, is one of them a fire truck, maybe, or any of them?
No, no, no.
These are all DPWs?
It's all Public Works.
So thirty-five, seventy-five, one forty-six, one forty-six.
It's seventy-five thousand for the, for the-
Thirty-five, seventy-five, and one forty.
Two fifty.
Like, he has a lot of money.
It's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Of his proposed replacement?
Yes.
So if you with, so if you don't, if you don't put in the money, and we do replace those vehicles, the fund will be around two-
Fifty less.
Right.
Which, which vehicles are you-
We're talking about the bucket truck-
By only those three?
Because that's what he wants to replace this year.
But that's what he has scheduled in that year.
And he-
That's what he has the bottom of his form.
Are scheduled that haven't been replaced yet.
But that's, that's this year.
It still comes out of the fund, right?
But we're looking at the, at the total amount, though.
But we're, we're trying to figure out what we're gonna budget. And so, we, we should be budgeting to replace two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We're not, we're only saying one thirty. Because this year, he's gonna come in with a bunch of proposals and say, we're gonna replace these trucks.
Well, we shouldn't replace two fifty right in one. I disagree with that, but two fifty, we'd have to be replaced over years.
And that's, agree.
Question is, is there some larger project outside of vehicles that this is going to do?
No, this is just, this is a vehicle fund.
So that's why I asked the question.
This is a vehicle fund.
So if you add the one, one thirty, and I get Tony's point, but if you add the one thirty, you'll have-
It's actually two hundred and fifty.
What's the replacement cost of all of his vehicles combined?
Tony just did part of that.
But if you do the ones that are, that are either have been due, that have been replaced in the last couple of years, and the ones that are coming due-
Replace them according to replacement cost.
Thirty-five, seventy-five, one forty-six, one forty-six, one forty, eighty, and eighty-eight. That's a lot of vehicles.
The ones that are do-
Yeah.
The ones that are do this, that are, well, passed, are the Ford F-250, the Mack, Mack roll-off, and the bucket truck. That was supposed to be replaced-
Oh, so he, you didn't, I don't know if you did.
No, there's some others.
Bucket truck was supposed to be replaced in two thousand fourteen, fifteen. The Mack roll-off is two fifteen, sixteen. The, you've got two other, you've got the two dump trucks that are supposed to be this year, but you didn't put those as priorities.
Right.
And then fifteen, sixteen.
I think the question on the table is, is five seventy-
Plus one thirty.
Plus one thirty, the right number to have?
That's, I say, I'm saying yes, because we're gonna be withdrawing more funds from there.
I agree.
We were already behind on some of the truck replacement.
We are, he, he made that point when he showed us the vehicle sitting on the side, that they were needed, and I think he did delay by one or two years replacing them, so he didn't do it the year he could. And, and that's, brings me to another point. I think, as we learned a lot in getting one-on-one and seeing, I think the town council should also do site walks prior to their budget considerations, so they know exactly what they should and shouldn't cut. That's gonna be one of my recommendations at the end.
We might, we, we, whenever they start, we, every year, we do the orientation, too.
Before the new council, we do that, which I think we're-
I think they should, you should do it every year, because things change every year, and there's a lot of, and there's, I'll get to it at the end, but as far as a building maintenance program, in my estimation, there isn't one.
So.
I stand on- Alternatively, in the operating budget, there's still a bit of contingency there, so I, I'm just feeling like we're doing it both ways.
I don't, like, let's not touch the operating budget right now, because I think we need to stick with the capital reserve to get this. So, are you gonna, I think we just need a specific motion for a specific line item to reduce, so we can vote on it, or we can vote on Counselor Pike's motion of, we're just gonna leave everything as is.
Then make a motion, there's no point-
Well, it's not really a motion, we'll go do a poll. So, I know you would definitely vote for reduction, you would wanna leave everything as is?
Yep.
Think I know where Gary's at, or Counselor Levy's at.
I would, I would, like I said, I would add up what you need to do this year. I mean, using Steve's, you know, own argument. And I would, you know, even if it was fifty grand or a hundred grand, by the time you got done, you'd be, because, you know, we're gonna be funding stuff that we're not gonna be touching. So, that's, people are gonna be putting money into the budget, they're gonna get in the tax bill, the money's gonna be sitting. Some of it may or may not need to be done for two years. I, you know, Rick put a couple of trucks off because he, you know, the trucks are a guesstimate. When do I need to replace it? Some he may have put off because they're really not too bad, maybe some, I mean, he certainly has enough money to get a, a couple of pickup trucks. He's got, you know, five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So, you know, he could buy those, so he did put them off for a reason, so. Anyway, you know where I'm at.
Counselor Burns?
Leave it.
Counselor Levy?
I'd like to cut.
All right, then. So, we have to say, so we need motions on what people wanna-
Well, if you, if you voted yet?
I have not voted yet. There's-
Because if you vote leave it, we're done, if you say cut, then we have to have a specific motion.
I know, I, I would love to say leave it and walk out of this room right now, but-
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
One point that the CIP did become aware of during our proceedings, and that might help you decide where you should or shouldn't cut, is that according to the town charter, seven point four, it does state that no elected or appointed officer employee shall devote any town property or labor to private use except as may be provided by authority of the council. Now, I understand that the, the town employees plow the school property, and I'm not sure if the town council is aware of that. And at what cost that is to us, and I don't know if that is in violation of seven point four. And, I mean, if, if the schools have to be plowed, more than likely, they're closed, so that means that the DPW plows them at the end of the day, which means that all the employees are in time and a half in top of it. It's warrant here on our vehicles, and so forth, and so on. And I don't know if that is allowed, if, if you can do that legally. I know the town administrator mentioned that he did get a legal opinion in regards to what we can and cannot do with the steeple, in regards to giving money to private entities. Does this, can, take that into consideration? And also-
It was church and state, I think, less private entity, and what is, how does that tie to the CIP? I'm just asking about what we're talking about now, how does that-
What we're tying in now is that when we do the CIP, for instance, Public Works comes before us for their equipment. And we have to decide what we should and shouldn't do, and so forth, just try to evaluate everything. And if, if they're doing work for entities that they're not supposed to, or not allowed to do, that's more warrant here on the vehicles, they're gonna break down sooner, and they have to be replaced sooner. So it is a CIP and a budgetary process that we should take-
As far as charging?
And we're not charging, it's, it's-
Charging off a portion of?
That would be just like what-
That's different- I feel like that's a legal issue that's beyond the conversation.
But that's, so, so if I made a motion to take, just to make a point, if I said I wanna take fifty thousand dollars off of DPW, for example, for, out of the, what would you recommend? I don't, I don't even have it in front of me anymore. Was it one thirty? So it would be eighty. That issue that you're bringing up, I don't think would really have a bearing on if I made that motion, and people said, okay, I can live with it, or I can't. I, I get the point, but that's not germane to-
Going down, yeah.
So I would say, I would say, take it-
Yeah, I'll ask the attorney.
But I, no, I would say, if you wanna motion, just for, to get, either decide to get out of here or not, because otherwise, we're gonna be here until four o'clock, I would say, take fifty off the DPW, or, you know, that, that budget.
I am, I am more inclined, looking at stormwater management, McAllen Dam, recognizing that it's going to engineering. We have fifty thousand in each, putting fifty thousand more in each, as opposed to seventy-five. It's a hundred thousand each, I don't know if that's gonna cover engineering, to get us to the place where we're probably gonna bond for any sort of-
You already have fifty in there, and that each in, in each of the twos. That'll give you seventy-five.
No, so there's fifty in McAllen Dam.
Oh, you wanna put another fifty?
Put another fifty, as opposed to another seventy-five.
So you'd say fifty, so you'd say fifty.
Can you see those lines by twenty-five?
Yes, what do you say?
Yeah.
That is something I'd be comfortable with, because that is an unknown expense, and what we need is money to cover engineering to get us to a place where we can bond. We're not gonna like, that is, that is something I would be comfortable with here, for reductions.
Will that cover the engineering?
Well, that's, we're talking about, if we, if we cut it, I mean, you might get by, but we're talking about, this is-
Multi-million.
Through till, uh-
June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
So that would be enough money, enough money to get to you two from a year from June, would be, now we're saying we can do that for, essentially, you wanna take that to a hundred instead of a hundred and twenty-five.
Don't we have certain deadlines?
Yeah, you have way more expertise in this than I do.
Well, I think it's, it's, um-
You'd have to know what the engineering costs are gonna be, but is a hundred enough to cover it? Is basically what you're asking.
You know, I, I think it, it might limit you, I, it's hard to know right now whether you wanna limit that, you know, it's gonna be a slow process anyways. You know, some of the stuff, if we did get into stability analysis, just to use one example, one of the things that could be the next step beyond where we are right now is, a lot of the bids that we got said, well, we might have to come in one, they, they said different things, we have to figure it out. But you could be doing probes to try to see what the foundation of the dam, and all of these things could be impacted, and could be more expensive than just engineering, engineering, it could involve fieldwork.
I apologize, but before Counselor Pickering leaves-
No, I'm, I'm waiting.
Okay. Now, this is a procedural thing. Are we meeting Wednesday night?
I think we have to, but we're pushing two o'clock now.
Six o'clock on Wednesday night?
Well, will you, if we finish this, we-
There's still more stuff to do.
You've gotta go water and sewer, and then you've got town administrator planning, help, so.
Then I would say, why don't we just table it now? Why are we-
We'll finish this item.
Finish this item, finish this item.
We're deep in the conversation, we're just finishing the conversation. So, Counselor Pike? What's your thought on the dam, if we reduce that to fifty from seventy-five?
You know, it's, it's, it's very hard to say, but I mean, some of these things, you know, we're talking a year and a half away from now, and, and limiting how much you have available. I, I think, I think it would be more prudent to leave it at the number that town administrators put in there, frankly.
Others?
I think that of all the, oh, sorry.
No, 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 go ahead. I was just jumping in.
Of all the funds, I mean, we know we're gonna spend that money at some point, you know? I mean, that's a, there's a clear path, in my mind anyway, for the, especially to the dam.
And stormwater, you want.
It's gonna, you know, it's gonna happen. So if we put, if we cut twenty-five today, we're going to be putting it, putting it in the budget tomorrow. You know, I mean, it's that, at some point, we're spending that, we're spending that money, right, yeah.
I'm gonna be less.
Well, it'll be more in two years.
Right, right.
But given the, I'm just thinking about the length, how long it's taken us even to get to here, which is not that far from where it was three years ago, when we first started having this problem.
Oh, you mean on the dam now, specifically?
Yeah.
Yeah, but we, we are at a point where we're gonna have a number pretty, you know, I think the, it'll be a process. You know, I, I, I think it's a decision we make, between, sure, could we cut it? Yeah, we could. Is that the more prudent course? I don't, I don't think it is in that case, in, in the dam particularly. I think these are reasonable numbers, that give us more flexibility to proceed at a reasonable pace, rather than constraining us, so.
I'd like to make one, one comment, and that is on stormwater. I've been attending meetings, the Stormwater Coalition, which has given updates on the MS four program. And we were told by EPA at the last meeting that by April of two thousand sixteen, they'll be issuing the permit for the MS four program, which means that Newmarket will have to participate in that program and develop a long-range stormwater management plan. And there could be, you know, construction costs down the road for the town in terms of implementing stormwater improvements. So, I just wanna bring to your attention that the MS four program is not gonna go away, and eventually, the town is gonna have to take the bull by the horn, so to speak, and deal with stormwater issues on a town-wide basis as part of that program.
The town administrator said that we would bond for construction, that this money would only go to-
That would be my recommendation.
Well, but the first step is to put together a stormwater management plan. So, that's where the engineering is gonna have to happen, before you can bond for it.
So we think that's gonna cost more than a hundred thousand?
Oh, God, yeah.
Yeah.
We're, we're estimating that's three hundred thousand.
Counselor Johnson.
I think my feeling is founded-
So I just want to bring that to your attention.
I would recommend the fifty thousand out of Public Works. I'd recommend, as you said, twenty-five each out of stormwater management. Just because of the timeline here, I think those funds can be used for other things that are more, that we need more right now. But the other thing is that if it comes down to it, I feel like we could find those funds within the operating budget with, with very little issue. It's not like we're looking at, oh, I don't know, the eight hundred thousand that we have to come up with for the wastewater, you know? I, I think that that is, that is coverable within the operating budget, and without having definite numbers. If we have to make up twenty-five thousand, I think we can do that. So I'd recommend, again, the total of, a total of a hundred, fifty, twenty-five, and twenty-five.
We really have to be very specific.
Yeah, no, we got it, she just, she got it.
Twenty-five, twenty-five, and fifty.
Fifty thousand from Public Works.
Public Works.
Twenty-five from, what you guys, from water.
Stormwater, and twenty-five from McAllen. Some kind of, I hope I'm seconding what, what the chairman was saying.
The poll in question is fifty thousand from Public Works, twenty-five from McAllen Dam, and twenty-five from Stormwater.
Which would leave eighty, fifty, and fifty, I mean, leave the, you know, give the numbers.
Just, just to finish it, though, we didn't finish the vote on the motion or the, the poll.
But what he's, he's, he's doing that, he's starting to do all three.
I'm gonna do all three at once.
Okay.
So, just to get moving.
Okay.
Pickering? So what we're reducing is fifty from Public Works, twenty-five from Stormwater, and twenty-five from McAllen Dam.
My question about McAllen Dam, when that was proposed and it started happening, how many years in a row has that happened for the McAllen Dam, the money, putting money aside? One year? One? So we have twenty-five thousand in there for that?
We have fifty right now. We have fifty right now.
We'll have a hundred if we do this, versus one twenty-five. Just right, I am answering his question.
Yep, no, you're right.
So we'll go from fifty to a hundred versus a fifty to a hundred and twenty-five?
Yeah, okay.
You're in favor of those reductions?
Yes.
Okay.
No.
No.
Even though I'm the one that brought it, I'm in favor of the Public Works and the Stormwater, but not the McAllen Dam.
So no.
Well, no, no to the one.
But I'm trying to-
Well, I think maybe you should do them separately.
You gotta do it separately.
I'm the same way. I'm yes for one and not for the other.
Public Works, we'll start that one. Are you in favor of reducing Public Works by fifty, Counselor-
Yes.
No.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
It passes, okay. McAllen Dam. You're in favor of reducing that by twenty-five thousand?
Need to rethink that one over. No.
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 The vote's done, it's already-
No, it's, you're fourth.
No, it's done.
Well, 'cause Dale was fourth, 'cause I said no.
Oh, okay. So we're gonna keep that one at seventy-five. Stormwater management. I'll start with Dale this time. Don't reduce it.
Yes.
Reduce it.
No.
Don't reduce it.
Yes.
No, any-
No.
Me, ding-dong here.
So we got one-
I'm, I'm just wanna think it through. You'll have a hundred grand, you're gonna need three, they're gonna come down and they're gonna start making us piecemeal this thing. I would say we, we'll be okay for the year. I don't think we're gonna burn through the money in a year.
Okay, so we got three in favor of reducing Stormwater, two opposed to reducing Stormwater.
No.
No.
So we're not reducing Stormwater, so that's seventy-five.
So we got fifty.
So it's fifty K.
Yep.
Fifty K.
All right. Anything else?